Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh four. I would like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father God, we just honor you and we give you the praise just because of who you are. And we ask you to just bless us this evening and bless us with your presence tonight as we meet. And Father God, we just ask that you will grant us with wisdom and clarity and discernment as we discuss and work the city budget. And Father, we just thank you again for your guidance. And we thank you for your protection and how you protect us and our families and our city employees, their families and our citizens of the city of Glen Arden and all that are affiliated with us. We ask that you give a blessing in your daddy's name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening. Councilwoman Farid?
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume? Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here. All right, we have a call. Um, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
I had them to talk about discussing the letter that went out to the citizens about that ordinance on commercial vehicles.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Any opposition to accepting the amended agenda? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby passed. Uh, for all citizens who are online, uh, thank you for coming to this meeting. Uh, just wanted to announce in the beginning that this will be a lengthy meeting, a lengthy meeting uh, due to us covering several things, including the budget. Um, so while we do welcome you to stay for the entire meeting, we understand if you do not stay the entire meeting. But this meeting is being recorded, so if you do drop off early, uh, you can always go back and um look at the parts of the meeting that you uh may have missed. So with that, uh, we will go to the first item on the agenda, which are the minutes for the month of March. Um, they are included in the work packet for council members to review. Uh, are there any questions now? Okay, hearing none, uh, they'll move forward to the public hearing and we'll vote on them in the regular session. Uh, moving on to legis- uh, proposed legislation for the month of June. Uh, we have three, four. Uh, so first up is ordinance, uh, an ordinance to amend section forty-three dash three of the Glen Arden City Code. Councilman Harry?
Um, Mr. President, with um, the ordinance O twelve, ordinance thirteen and R sixty-four, uh, not R sixty-four, R sixty-four we need to vote on. Um, but um, those two, I'm bringing them because I want them to go through the formal process. But we really don't have to discuss them until the new council come on board. So I just wanted to bring them to the work session. If anybody have any questions on them, I can answer them, but um that's basically what it, what they are. And it's just about animals and taking, I mean, controlling your animals, keeping your animals under control and making sure your animals are not uh being a nuisance to other citizens' private property.
Does I see a question? I'm gonna bring it up any, I'm gonna bring up the ordinance on the screen so people can see it. Uh, council, I'm sorry, Councilman uh, Herring, are you done?
Yeah, I am. Thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Um, Councilman Herring, I do have one question concerning this ordinance uh, pertaining to cats. Because, I mean, cats aren't normally kept on a leash and they're just roam the neighborhood. So how would we be able to um control them?
Technically, you really can because cats are supposed to be, really are supposed to be under your control also. Um, but we have so many strays, but people do own cats. And if you do own a cat and it's out and about and, you know, um, I just wanted to include them because people, some people do own cats, but we also have an issue with strays, so. Um, that's an, yeah, that's a question, yeah. I mean, if the cat got a collar on it and it's tagged, you probably can find out who the owner is, but, you know, most owners should have a, have control of their cats. Some people let them out the house and just let them run the neighborhood. So um, but that's the issue too, so. Dogs, I can see.
I'm sorry. So maybe if this ordinance is passed, then we may maybe need to, uh, people that are having problems with cats, because we do have a lot of strays all over the, the, the city, uh, we can just start calling animal control and having them come and pick them up?
Yeah, that, a lot of times animal control requires you to get the cage and catch them yourself.
Okay.
That's what they made me do when I had a stray on my deck and kittens underneath it. Um, I had to catch it and then had to take it up to animal control. It came and got the kittens, but it wouldn't get the adult. So I mean, it's something we can discuss and look at. Um, you know, I just wanted to get it, get the topic on the floor just to this, just to have some discussion.
All right, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, and Madam Clerk, the, this is the only um, piece of legislation that's not available online. I'm trying to click it on it, like, it's giving me an error, so. The other ones work, this one doesn't, so.
Okay.
That we could check that so citizens can have access to an ordinance, that would be great. All right, any other questions on um ordinance twelve? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinance thirteen. An ordinance to add a new section to chapter forty-three of the code of the city of Glen Arden to include provisions regarding nuisance behavior uh, by animals.
Yeah, um, uh, you mind, Mr. President, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Over you.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yeah, and this is just really because I've, I mean, I've seen, noticed a lot of people now putting signs up in the yard, asking people not to let the dog relieve themselves in their yard. Um, mostly it has to deal with dogs. Um, because again, I don't think nobody should be bringing their dog outside their, off of their property to, taking down somebody else's property to go to the bathroom and relieve themselves. Um, Glen Arden has a lot of empty lots. Um, War One has uh, pet waste stations. And there's no reason for somebody to bring their dog down to your house or to your property to go to the bathroom. And I'm just trying to address that situation because a lot of citizens around here are putting up the signs, you know, please clean up after your dog, but you shouldn't have to put that on your front yard when you walking out your front door. Oh, you got a backyard and you bring your dog down to go to the bathroom in somebody else's yard. So that's what I'm trying to address on this, with this piece of legislation.
And Councilman Harry? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
All right. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance from council members? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to um, resolution sixty-four. Uh, that's twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city council to break for summer recess. Councilman Harry?
Uh, you know what that one's for?
Yeah.
Ain't even gotta do that one.
Um, the only question I have is with the up revisions to the charter, is a resolution necessary since it's already baked into the charter? Or do we need to continue to bring forward a resolution?
It says we can choose to go on recess, so I guess we gotta let, it gives us the option of to go on recess or not go on recess in the charter. So I guess we're gonna choose to go on recess so the citizens know we will be on recess.
Okay. Um, and a- again, it doesn't mean that we will not meet. It means that we can go on recess, but if clearly if there's um unfinished business or urgent matter, then the council can still meet during the period where we are in recess. So are there any questions from council members? All right, we'll move on to the last one, uh, which is, uh, oh, so it's R sixty-five dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's a minor uh, uh, amendment to R dash sixty twenty twenty-five. So if council recall that we um, passed a resolution to accept a grant for um uh, the flock cameras. Um, the only amendment that needs to be made is that the amount was wrong. So it wasn't forty thousand dollars, it was, I think, fifty-three thousand dollars. Uh, actually, let me just bring it up. It's actually fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, and so this is just an amendment to revise the amount. Now, I don't think we need a resolution. I think we just need a consensus, but I could be wrong, so I, I, I welcome correction on that. Um, Mr. Who is it? Uh, Mr. Wood and Mr. Simpson, you guys online? Uh, council, I, I think all we need is a consensus.
Um, so, uh, if I can jump in, thank you, Council President. Um, so, yes, uh, it's a revision uh, up to fifty-one thousand. There was um, a subsequent addendum for a second uh, tranche, so that, that's what got us up to fifty-one thousand. Um, and it allows the program to run um, instead of one years. That gives us enough funding um, to, to fund two years completely. Um, that's the long and short of it. Um, but yeah, I wanted to, wanted to make sure we went through the proper channels to, to make that amendment. Um, nothing substantive is, is changing. But welcome questions.
Any questions? Councilman Harry?
Yeah, so is this, so this additional amount is coming from a, is it coming from the same source or additional source? You just gonna notify that there's money that they're gonna give us?
Yeah, so it's from the same, it's from the same uh, state agency. Um, it's simply, what happened is, and, and I'm sure you're familiar, uh, the initial uh, pot of money was, was doled out and we were awarded and there was um, leftover funding. Um, and so they handed out uh, additional or awarded additional funding. Um, and so that was uh, something that we were uh, able to benefit from. Um, and so that just allowed the uh, pilot program to be, to be extended. But it's the same, same state agency for the same purpose, um, the same uh, application. Everything else is the same. There was just a supplemental essentially.
Okay, so it was just, uh, they just notified us, hey, here's an additional eleven thousand dollars. No application was needed to be done, none of that?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, so really all we need is a motion to accept eleven thousand?
Yeah. So I, I motioned that we accept the eleven thousand. Is there a second?
And this is gonna be as a consensus? Because we really need to do it on the floor.
When you say on the floor, you're talking about?
This is, this is, yeah, a regular session. This is a work session. Not supposed to technically be voting in a work session.
Okay, so we'll um, save it to the work session, I'm not work session, save it to the floor on the sixteenth.
Okay. Or the, or the public hearing, one of the two.
Oh, public hearing. Uh, are there any other questions? Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, I'm kind of thinking maybe we should keep the resolution because that way it'll, it'll be in writing what the pleasure of the council was. Uh, for this money, I, I know it's gonna be a consensus and maybe in the minutes, but still I would, um, you know, like, if someone looks later on to see that we have accepted and the additional monies and the, the um resolution in the beginning was forty and now we've got an extra eleven, uh, that someone might ask where that came from. And to have it in writing, I think, would be more uh, sufficient for uh, any challenges. Just my thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions uh, with this resolution? Okay, well, we can move forward accordingly. Uh, all right.
Thank you, council.
Uh, and we'll move forward with the topics of discussion. Thank you. All right, first is um, I didn't receive a script from our attorney, but the, the first topic of discussion is eighty-eight oh seven Glen Arden Parkway with the curb cut. Um, I do believe we have to make uh, an official decision. Uh, well, Mr. Simpson, you can chime in here.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Council. Uh, thank Council President. We do have Mr. Bentley Green from our attorney's office also to be able to provide any additional clarity uh, as needed.
Okay, uh, Mr. Green, is there anything that, anything official we have to, to do here?
Yes, good evening. Um, thank you. Um, so I, I think just the, the best course is to um, go ahead and, and yeah, have some sort of um, you know, it follow up, um, you know, maybe presentation or, or, you know, allow uh, Mr. Shalabi and uh, you know, I did, he represents, or he, he works with a day RLC and that's who the uh, petition for judicial review. That's what it um, pertained to. And um, you know, that just happened last fall, um, his, his uh, curb cut permit was denied. And there wasn't any, you know, I guess that there weren't, there weren't findings that were sufficient, you know, for the court to be able to, uh, you know, make any decision and affirm the council's position on that. So I think just the best, you know, matter of course here is for uh, it's for the council to, you know, bring them back in, hear their case and, you know, let them answer any questions that, that any council members may have of uh, Mr. Shalabi and day RLC. Um, and then, you know, if it deliberate at, at that point, you know, either close session or with them uh, and, and then issue an official uh, decision to that. Uh, I think the, the problem we ran into in their petition was that, you know, there was, it was denied, but no reasoning was provided. So uh, their attorneys asked, you know, to either come in at, you know, a pu- a public hearing or a public session, um, sometime to where it can be put on the record. Um, you know, once again, I know, I know this, it was on the record, his first presentation back in September. Um, but just, I think, you know, just to allow him to come back and, you know, maybe if, see if he's addressed any of the concerns that were present back in September and maybe field any additional questions and then um, go from there and the council can make the decision there and then issue its findings to Mr. Shalabi.
Okay. Thank you. Um, council members, any comments? Any um, opposition to bringing um, the gentleman back in? And we could book him on the public hearing for next Tuesday? And then have a decision by the regular session the following Monday? Any comments, opposition to that?
Mr. President, I think we should um, have him come in at a public hearing and make a decision. We don't have to make a decision, you know, we can go in a closed session and make a decision on that and then com- communicate that to him because remember, we only got one hour on the sixteenth before we're changing on, so.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Green, when we meet with him and then we adjourn to closed session, uh, does the decision have to be made in an open session or can the decision be made in closed session and communicated to Mr. Um, uh, the gentleman?
Uh, yes, so the, the decision can be made in the closed session um, and, and uh, you know, provide your findings and, and we can, you know, write that into some sort of, you know, official opinion um, and, and then provide that to him uh, based on, you know, however the vote goes and, and whatever reasons were given um, for that decision. But uh, yeah, that decision can, can for sure be made in, in a closed session and then, you know, we go from there, uh, whatever is, is convenient. I, I just know he, he would like to, another chance to uh, present and, you know, I know I was, I was told that there might be some time constraints, so if he needs to come in and make his present, presentation and then go to a closed session uh, where you guys make your decision, relay that to uh, uh, Kevin or myself, uh, we can then um, help put together the, the official um, position of the council on that.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't know whether, who will be, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, I have one question for Mr. Green. Uh, Mr. Green, have you, have you uh, done a visual of this property that, that's in question?
Uh, no, ma'am, I've, I've not. Uh, I've seen the, I've seen the presentation he gave last September. Uh, and, and the record that was produced in, in his petition for judicial review. Um, I have not been to the actual area um, myself, but that's just, you know, from where we were on the, on the petition, there was, you know, I understand he wanted to do construction on the, on this, I think it's eight-eight oh five Glen Arden Parkway. Um, and, and for that, he needed a curb cut permit. Uh, so I have not seen it myself, but I've just seen the plans that were, that were produced in his original presentation.
But would it be wise for the city of Glen Arden to present uh, photographs also of this property? Because what it is, is that he bought some unbuildable lots that the, the county is saying that, you know, but uh, the citizens in that area have gone, he built that first one because we uh, uh, we just didn't get an opportunity to uh, do, go through the process that normally takes when um people come before us to build on lots. But um, and the citizens in that area just are livid behind eighty-eight oh five, and now he wants to, no, eighty-eight oh seven, and now he wants to build eighty-eight oh five. So that's the issue, the issue. So I'm thinking that if we also present uh, pictures of what this is gonna look like, how close it is up on one house now and how close it's gonna be up on another piece of property, uh, that it's just uh, insufficient to, to, to build another um pro- another piece, another parcel on that property. So. So would the pictures be helpful or not?
Oh, yeah, certainly. I, I, I think those pictures would be helpful and he, you know, maybe he could answer any questions to those. Um, that would certainly help uh, aid the council in making any decision and issuing any findings on that.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Green, can I ask a question? I know that the first house was built because the county passed that new zoning ordinance for non-conforming lots. And they said that we're gonna revisit it. Do you know if they've revisited that uh, zoning ordinance and that?
Off the top of my head, I do not, but I can certainly look into it. I can follow up um, with someone tonight or tomorrow morning and, and, and take a look at that ordinance and then double check, but I do not know off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, uh, Mr. Simpson, if you can connect with, uh, if you, either you or Mr. Green, not Mr. Bentley Green, but uh, um, James Green, uh, connect with the gentleman, uh, to have him show up at the public hearing next week on Tuesday. That would be great. All right. Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Bentley Green. I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Uh, next.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Jones?
I just want, is Mr. Uh, the gentleman gonna show up with his, with his attorney or is, is he coming just uh, his, him and his company?
At, at this moment, I don't know. I, I mean, I wouldn't put it past him um to come with his attorney. I mean, I, I mean, I'd probably come with my attorney. Um, if I'm coming the second time, but I, I just don't know at this, at this moment.
So do you think it would be wise to have um, um, our city attorney online or in the meeting also in case we get bum rushed?
Mr. Mr. Bentley Green?
Thank you, Mr. Council.
Do you know if someone from your um, firm will be able to join us next week?
Um, yeah, we can certainly make arrangements for that. That, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, uh, Mr. Simpson, if you can also send um, Mr. Green the, the um, the times for the meeting as well. The logistics, just handle all the logistics for everything involved. That would be great. All right. Uh, final placements of speed bumps slash humps. Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Yes, actually, uh, Mr. Wood, I believe he has that in available. Let me make sure. Hold on one second. Um, we just wanted to confirm with the information that was sent out with the most recent uh, speed bumps, uh, and the map that was provided to council via email. Uh, and to know if you had any last minute changes and or recommendations. Um, we want to get your feedback on that.
When did that email go out?
Hell, I'm pulling it back up myself. I'm sorry, wait, I can sh- I can share the uh, map.
Hold on, one second. That's uh, allow you to share.
Okay.
Thank you, should be good to go, Mr. Mr. Wood.
Okay, am I sharing?
Nope, you're not sharing.
Oh, sorry, here we go. And Curtis, that, that, I think it was May thirteenth?
Okay, I thought it was a, a, a recent one, but we don't have that one. I, I don't have any. Um, outside of the, um, I know we budgeted, think, a couple, a few additional humps. Uh, and I know that during our last, well, a meeting that where we touched on this topic, uh, that uh, the speeding on Glen Arden Parkway around that uh, first uh, roundabout where accidents have happened, uh, possibly putting one um in front of the um, the roundabout. And I would like for that to be in effect um, with one of the additional ones that we budgeted. Outside of that, I don't have any uh comments on a placement. It, does any other council members have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr.
Councilman Herring?
Um, so I'm looking at the map um, for War One and Polk Street has none. Um, I mentioned that before, and I don't see any on Polk Street. And they definitely need something to slow traffic down on that street. Um, let's see. And that would be, oh wow. Uh, my first map, all, left the street all the way to the left on a first map, um, that's Polk Street. There is none and they usually start from Church Street all the way down to uh, Fisk Avenue, you know, nonstop. Um, and so we need something to slow them down, street.
Okay, Council President?
Ma'am? Yes, yes, go ahead.
Hey, Councilman Harry, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm looking at, we're coming down Tyler, uh, all the far left. And then it turns into Polk Street if we move up. Are we, are you saying that area?
All the way over to the right, I mean, all the way over to the left, the last street over to the left.
Yes, okay. I think that it looks like that one seventy-nine oh five. Then we got seventy, see that red, they're red, that's probably.
A map that I have, okay. So that is a, that is a speed bump. A map than I have, okay, so that is a, that is a speed bump.
Yes, sir.
Cause you got what, three on, four on there?
Yes, sir. Two, well, you you have two there at the top, and then as you pa- pass Polk Court and Tyler Street. You have two more, your seventy nine eleven and seventy nine twenty one.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure, I'm looking at a different map, so.
Okay, my apologies. And just also for clarification, if I can, the the ones in war one, we're doing the temporary. Speed humps with the exception of the two on Hayes Street, or I'm sorry, the three on Hayes Street, where the buses. Uh go, come down that particular street. Metro buses there.
Hey, without temporary, you still have the drill in the ground?
Yes.
Uh and what's the estimated start time to implement this?
Well, contractors, uh N D I is currently uh onsite now, they actually will be beginning new sidewalk as installation in war one. Uh and some of the repairs, once this is confirmed, uh before they finish their work, we're trying to have everything finished. By the end of this month, um we should be able to have all street work completed, all sidewalk repairs. As well as the installation of speed up.
By the end of this month?
Yes, sir.
Um so they all have multiple crews attacking attacking different spots, or how does that work?
Yes, yes, they'll have a a milling and asphalt crews uh that will also handle the speed humps. As well as the sidewalk crews, so they're mobilizing now for sidewalk crews and uh following week, they'll be working with their. Uh milling and asphalt crews um into the other designated areas. Uh for street repair work.
Okay, just wanna make sure, cause there's been another accident on Glen Arden Parkway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh I'm sorry, there's a hand raise, okay, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, um Mr. Simpson, um I can't really see the diagram, but um did y'all add um. A uh speed bump by Fourth Street?
Uh ma'am, that would, that actually was my next comment, I know that there was a, per your uh the meeting with residents. And I know there have been some discussions, uh we do have two additional speed humps uh available. Uh I think that was from Bright Seat Road, Fourth Street, or between Second and Fourth Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes, I do wanna confirm, then that is the desire of the council, and we will proceed accordingly.
It's like, once they um. Cross Glen Arden Parkway, they jetting.
Yes, ma'am.
Past the number streets.
No, Brian, I don't, I don't, it's not actually on this, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we we'll be adding that between the Second and Fourth Street location.
On Glen Arden Parkway?
Yes, on Glen Arden Parkway. Please know that the the maps that are provided here is was part of the CPJ A uh analysis, and it was done primarily for wars one and three. Um aside from what was just presented to us for that particular area, it didn't. We didn't look at, I'm sorry, didn't look at anything um below Bright Seat Road or near the Bright Seat Road area. The focus in the Woodmore area for uh war three. And then, of course, the concerns in war one. Sorry.
Yeah, I was saying, thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, moving forward with the placement of flock cameras, uh back to you. And I guess the chief, if he's on.
Do you want me to go ahead and share that as well?
Yes, please, bro.
Uh I can. Alright. Are you guys, is everyone able to see the?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chief, how are you doing?
I'm well, alright, yeah, so um based on these cameras, um. They were, we had meetings with Flock, uh the captain, lieutenant and I, uh we had three meetings. And the placement of these cameras were due to the fact um to get the most. Um the main arteries, basically, to cover the main arteries um of traffic coming in um. Egress and ingress into the city, so these are the best places we thought they would be um. When cars come through, um in in the purpose of the cameras, uh to read the license plates um for different things like missing persons, stolen cars and. Crimes that occur in different jurisdictions coming through the city of Glen Arden, going into DC and stuff. So um of course, Martin Luther King um was one of our main areas for that, um. So that's why you see cameras placed there, and then um we had one on Bright Seat Road, um. Which is um, we stayed on Bright Seat Road, which was just outside of just our limits of Glen Arden, which was not a problem. But we did that, we moved it back to that area, cause we wanted to get a good view, any vehicles coming down into that area. Um attempting to go into the apartments over there in Maple Ridge, or into the um Glen uh Glen Hill apartment areas. They gave us a wi- wider range in reference to that, and of course, we had the three park areas um for for the regular cameras and stuff. Um for surveillance, um just to make sure that our parks are safe. So that's how we came about with these locations and stuff, but um they're not set in stone. Um so if we have any questions or concerns about them, we can most definitely um revisit it. But that's how we came with their locations for these um strategic um locations.
Thank you. So. What these red spots are, that's the cameras. So the two that are outside our jurisdiction, so why do we have them outside the jurisdiction?
Well, we we just have one basically outside jurisdiction, that's one on Bright Seat Road. Um that's when you're coming into uh coming down Bright Seat Road, coming into the city, it just gave us a wider range, um picking cars up. Um going down Glen Ar- I mean, going down Bright Seat Road, coming into the city, it just gave us a wider range of picking up more vehicles. Um crossing that area, um cause we can move it up to E V O X. We can move it up to E V O X, but we just had it back here, um just to pick up more cars, turn off. If any car wanted to turn off before E V O X into these apartments up here before E V O X, we'd be able to pick it up too, but um. That's not a problem if we needed to move it, but um it's not a problem with the county or anything either, so that's why we decided to put it there. Um after the consult with the captain lieutenant, and um with Prince George's County Police Department.
How about the the two on the right? Right hand side, where it says Royal Gardens? Yeah, thank you. Oh, I see, I see, you know. Alright, any any questions from council members, Councilman Herron?
Uh so, I guess my my, yeah, my concern is that one on Bright Seat Road is outside the city limits, I'm not understanding what's. What's that's gonna do, you know, basically, once you get on Bright Seat Road. You know, you can turn off into Maple Ridge, you can turn off into, and then when the data center gets, data center gets built, you can turn off into there. I'm not understanding why it's outside the city limits, when it should be right there by E V O X coming into the city. If we're not concerned as safety of our citizens, why aren't we checking out who's coming into the city versus. Somebody outside that may pick up more people going into those Maple Ridge apartments, or the data center after a while, that's who's gonna be picking up mostly. Not even going through the city, um and is that other one? The two on the right, what is, which road is that on, is that on? Is that, that's on Bright Seat, is that on Bright Seat Road inside the city, the one on the right, or? I'm not sure where that's, where that's at, that says Royal Gardens, I mean.
I think that's Glen Arden Parkway, uh Councilman Herron, I think it's just labeled wrong.
Yes, uh that's Glen Arden Parkway at Eleventh Street.
Oh, okay, okay, so you're just gonna get cars going into Woodmore?
Right, coming into Woodmore, yeah, you know, that that um coming down Glen Arden Parkway, coming around the circle, around Eleventh Street, around the area. Uh Jeff Road, no area, so we have one posted there. But um Councilman Herron, in reference to uh the one on Bright Seat Road, that's coming into the city, like you come off um two oh two. Make the right, coming up Bright Seat Road, coming into the city, we had it back there so we can get a wider range, but um. We have, we can bring it up to E V O X and bring it inside the city limits, it's not a problem. But um we're just doing it for informational purposes, catching more tags and for cars turning off and stuff. Cause you know, a lot of times with these cars, especially with these stolen cars and stuff, these guys like to turn off in these apartment buildings and drop them off there and stuff, but um. Like I said, none of the stuff is set in stone, we just wanna get you guys input and reference to it before we make final decisions, um so that's where we are.
Well, I still have a problem, I still have a problem with twenty-four hour recording in these parks, I I have a major problem with that. Um certainly in M L K, because it's gonna be pointing right at people's houses, um.
Well, we clarified, we uh, we had a meeting, in our last meeting, we had um. We got the angles where it won't be pointing at people's houses, with um, we got it. Concentrating on the park areas and parking lots and stuff, we went over each park area, um. With Brian um from Flock, and for adjustment from cameras, cause we we told him that was a primary concern, making sure we're not um. Concentrating on people's homes and stuff, and um make sure we directed the cameras on the park areas, like the parking um. Like the M L K um park, for example, uh concentrating on the um the new equipment in the area, in that parking lot. That's, you know, right there by the park, by the trees and stuff, um so. Towards, the camera facing towards that way, not towards the houses and stuff on that street on P Mark.
Wasn't that one at the American Legion, is that still there? I mean, the Veterans Memorial?
Yes, so, yeah, so we got Veterans Memorial, uh Seventh Street. And um M L K, those are three areas we wanted to have the surveillance um cameras.
So how are they gonna have a camera positioned on the ve- on the Veterans Memorial?
So basically, um that's more of a um. After speaking with the city manager and going over that, we have some area with the electrical part behind the the actual structure itself. We had people tampering with the um, I guess with the electrical circuits and stuff, I don't know what they're trying to do in reference to that, so we got more focusing on that. In that area, um coming from behind there, and around on the actual um monument itself.
Chief, if I can jump in, um yes, as as the chief was saying, what we were able to work out with. Uh Flock was, they have um a pole that we're able to position. Uh right next to uh one of the street poles, one of the challenges is that um obviously the, we we didn't have access to. Uh the streetlight poles, um and so we're able to position a a standalone pole right next to it with. The necessary uh electricity, um so it's actually gonna be facing the backside of uh of the park there. Um where city manager Simpson and 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 chief have both outlined, um I guess some activity that's been happening. On the backside of the uh of the park, rather than where we had originally proposed it, which was forward facing, which also captured. Well, could have potentially captured um some of the the housing behind it, this direction opposite um doesn't do that.
So you got it captured in the back of it, but we were just at the Veterans Memorial on Monday. And you can see where somebody took a nail or something and drew on it.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, uh Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, uh Mr. Wood, could you zoom in a bit, uh so the angle that uh Flock. Had shown us, and uh I was hoping I had the other, the, it's gonna be facing uh towards. Sort of the backside and be able to capture the sort of the front side, uh no, I think we had some still pictures. Uh of of when he moved that around a bit, but it's gonna be on, uh I think that's Irving. So it's gonna be on Irving facing towards McLean, yes, yeah, it's gonna be on that area, and it's gonna catch. Uh people in the front and in the back, if you will, uh and strategically pay placed in that space. Um unfortunately, it might catch one or two homes there, but it is uh face, it's it's strategically placed to be able to definitely catch. Right, right where that outlet is and where the lights are, and uh see people coming up and in. To the front of the memorial itself, you, as you already know, that memorial has a bit of a uh sort of a. C shape, a a sort of a bend to it, but based on the pictures that they provided in that meeting. Um it would, it would be able to essentially catch. Images of essentially both sides, but definitely more so on the backside, if that makes any sense.
Okay, um. That was, I had one other question, um geez, I forgot. Alright, um.
Other question, uh give Mr. Herron some additional time to remember his question, so um. What about the front end of the city of Glen Arden near the town center? Um yeah, why was there not a camera placed there? As I know that, for example, there's a lot of things that happen up there, um there was a, I know, robbery at the. Bank, P and C Bank up there, um is, was that not given any?
Well, that property is on on um Woodmore, and um security manager, um Lynn Snyder. So all that's on them, um they do, yeah, that's all that's on them, they have one posted up there in the area. Um I don't know, I think it's that one the roundabouts, but um. All that's on them, so you know, they do have um license plate read up there in one of the circles and stuff, but all that's, all that property is on them as far as um. Cause that that'd be ideal for us, but um it'd be tied in, all of, all of, all of it's tied into um. Prince George's County Police Department um Live Center.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Herron, does you remember your question?
Remember my question, um have we, we haven't done an ordinance on the permissions, the rights and permissions of using these cameras, and that at. The last meeting, the uh Flock representatives said, you know, you put an ordinance in place on what you can and cannot do, how you gonna. Use these cameras, when are we gonna get that ordinance and uh get that in place?
I I can, I can check with um um Brian over at Flock tomorrow, so we can get that in place.
Alright, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Uh next up is the police station update. Still in, guys?
Yes, good evening, Council President, uh we have put together timeline, I'm going to, and we also had a meeting today with CPJ. Um Mr. Wood, uh if you will. Think you're muted, brother.
Sorry, yes, uh let me. Sorry, yes, uh, let me pull it up here and. Um, I will share. All right, if everybody can, uh, see this, sharing, um, so yeah, so we had, uh, a really productive meeting with. CPJ this, uh, this morning, yeah, this morning. Um, we did a walkthrough of two potential sites. Um, pretty much on either side of, uh, of the church, uh, right next to City Hall. Um, and there's certainly some pros and cons, um, to both, but, um, to kind of step back. Uh, the timeline that we have here, uh, obviously has adjusted a little bit, but essentially the feasibility study. Um, overall should be completed by, um, mid-August. Um, and that will really kind of walk through things such as a square footage, the space needs assessment within the facility. Um, understanding the, uh, permits required, the traffic patterns, um, looking at. Um, any impacted areas such as, um, removal of trees or, or, um. Any other impacted green spaces and what offsets would be needed, um, at the state level. Um, impervious air, impervious area, what the, um, offsets for that would be. Um, whether it be a retention pond or other things. Um, so really get us to the point where we're ready to, uh, make a decision about whether or not. Uh, we're gonna move forward and then, uh, really, um, set us up for the actual, um, architecture. Uh, of, of the actual building. Um, so there'll be several iterations. Um, between staff and, um, the consultants, uh, between now and August twelfth. Uh, mid-August, and so what I'll also share, um, is a longer timeline. Sorry, let me just pull it up here. All right. So what you'll see here, um, is a, is a broader timeline, um, and so it's really looking at. When the completion of the feasibility would be, would be, um, the review between staff, presentation. Um, to council, what actions are needed by, by council, uh, whether to move forward or not. Um, what would be, uh, kind of the period for an RFP to go out for a design or design build or design bid build. Uh, process, um, which would, if council decides to move forward, would be in October, November range. Um, and then two weeks for staff to kind of review and score and present that back to council. Um, assuming council decided to move forward with that, um, there's the actual design phase. Um, and so all in all, if everything were to move forward. Um, and, and receive obvious, uh, council approval at, at each of the necessary steps. Uh, we'd be looking at mid-February of twenty twenty-six for a, uh. Uh, a completed design phase, um, and, and looking at, um, breaking ground sometime. Um, thereafter with a twelve to twenty-four month, probably somewhere in the eighteen month, um, actual build out. Um, of the facility, so, um, if everything kind of stayed on track and, and council. Uh, voted to move forward, it would be sometime in twenty twenty-seven, mid-twenty twenty-seven. That, yeah, sometime mid, mid, late twenty twenty-seven, uh, would be when we would be cutting the ribbon and, and. Uh, moving in, so, um, it seems like things are, are moving fast, but that's, uh. You know, kind of the, the timeline for, for projects like this. Um, obviously there is, um. Four million dollars allocated by the state, um, secured already, um, so I think having this type of timeline. Um, moving forward, um, with deliberate speed on the feasibility study will definitely. Uh, show, uh, great progress, um, towards the movement of this project. Um, and then obviously the other piece, and we'll have a clear picture at the end of the feasibility or the completion of the feasibility study in mid-August. Um, about what the final price tag will look like, um, and where there's opportunities to bring that down based on potential costs. Um, and, and other, um, deciding factors that, uh, council brings forward, so. Uh, that's kind of where we are, is exciting, um. But yeah, so those, those will be the next steps and, and certainly, um, depending on, um, what council desires. Um, we'd be able to provide as many updates, uh, throughout the feasibility completion process. Um, as, as desired.
Excuse me real quick, Chief Bryant, um, check the date again, um. I think the date would be twenty twenty-nine, not twenty twenty-seven. After speaking with the architect today, um, he said it's gonna be about three years. Um, to get, to get us inside the facility. So we can double check on that, but that's the information you told me today on the site.
Okay, maybe I missed that conversation.
Thank you. Are, are there any questions in council?
Yeah, I have a question. Architect, I didn't know we had an architect that was working on this building.
Uh, President Fleming?
Yes.
So it is CPJ, uh, they have their own particular architects as they're working through the feasibility study. So we've not yet retained an architect for a design build. Uh, I do believe that'll be, uh, determined again via RFP. Um, uh, as we go through the process, but CPJ has their particular architects. Uh, uh, working with the project.
My issue is, you know, you're, you're talking twenty twenty-seven and the chief is talking twenty twenty-nine. That's a big difference when it comes down to when this building is gonna be ready. Um, so I think y'all need to be on the same page on, on this. That's a big swing, a twenty-two year difference, so. And that's what I'm trying to figure out, you know, everybody need to be on the same page if we're gonna get this built. Um, all right, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Jones?
President, I think once we get an architect that the council has determined is going to do the, uh, project. We'll get a better idea of when, uh, completion will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for the, the timeline, uh, that we can clearly, uh, share with. You know, obviously our residents, but also those who help secure funding for, um, this project to. Give them assurance that we actually are moving forward with this, so thank you. Uh, final, um, no, second to final, uh, next topic of discussion is the farmer's market, Mr. Simpson.
Uh, so I think we have farmer's market and community garden update.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so just a brief, I'll start with the community garden, um, uh, we currently have nine raised garden beds. They've been successfully construct, constructed. The tent bed is currently, or will be assembled and be completed this week. Um, several residents, participants have applied and will receive their assigned garden plots as well, uh, in this week. We're also planning a community event to welcome the participants and celebrate the launch. Now, uh, they'll be assigned and we'll go through, um, their particular assignments and understand, you know, where their plots are. Uh, all related expenses, uh, with that particular event. We're hoping and looking to have it covered under the project charge award. So we'll have some additional planning and additional. Um, material being sent out, or as to say, we'll have an additional store space installed there. The deer fence has also been installed, so we do have. Some secure, uh, have it secured at this particular point as well, um. In alignment with the resolution, authorizing the community garden, we'll be forming the community garden committee to assist with the volunteer coordination. Implementation as well as, uh. The on guy, ongoing resident, uh, engagement. We're looking at June twenty-first to have that particular event. Um, and to that end, we're seeking council's input. Should we begin, uh, form the committee now with the current seated council? Or should we include the incoming members who will be sworn in at the next regular meeting, um, with the understanding of possibly. We're having, uh, council members as part of, or a council member as part of the committee. Um, but that's an update with the community garden. Any question so far with that? Oh, I'm sorry, there's approximately ten thousand dollars remaining with the FY twenty-five project charge award. Uh, that, that's, uh, we're, we're looking to, uh, absorb any additional costs, uh, that go into the community garden. Uh, and have that reimbursed. We believe all of the community, remaining community garden related expenses, including the planned event that we're looking at June twenty-first. Uh, can, can be covered with those funds. Um, while these expenditures fall in the scope of the original approved resolution, I'm asking, does the council prefer to proceed under the authority of the existing resolution? Or would you like us to prepare a separate resolution to formally authorize the next phase of spending? So those are the questions regarding the community garden.
The, the next phase of spending included in the FY twenty-six budget, correct?
So there'll be more phases there, but with the event that we're planning, where it, it'll be completed within this particular fiscal year. And there's an opportunity, uh, with the project charge award, um, to be able to recoup. Uh, uh, this, uh, I'm sorry, potentially about ten grand, uh, what's remaining. I'd have to confirm that amount, but I know it's in that range. Um, and then we will be funding for FY twenty-six, the community garden, um, or would like to. And of course, that will be contingent upon this success, uh, but it is pretty popular right now. We do have, uh. People are very much interested.
Yeah, but the, the fiscal year ends in less than a month, so we have an event this month?
Yes, yes, we're planning for one on June twenty-first. I wanted to get this feedback. Um, so we've already have enough participants, so we'll be assigning the plots, uh, this week. And then we're gonna do a engagement, another community sort of engagement event. Um, I'll email the details. Uh, with that event, we are able to recoup, uh, the expenses associated with that. And, uh, assist the residents and the members that have the plots, as well as the community. Uh, possibly hand out seedlings, uh, give some educational, uh, information relative to gardening. Uh, and it's the perfect time. I mean, fortunately, we, we did have some cooler weather, uh, this week is gonna heat up, so we wanna be able to. Get that fully off the ground and running.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, um, Mr. Simpson, with this program, and you're trying to get it, you need council's input. Um, on the community garden day event?
So I'd like to get input on two things. One, uh, the committee that is gonna be formulating. Um, wanna know, should we begin forming the committee now with the current seated council? I know, uh, there's gonna be some slight changes, or should we wait and, and shoot information out to the new council? Uh, and include them, uh, once they're sworn in at the next regular meeting, uh, to be a part of the committee. Um, and then also, as it relates to the additional funding. Um, the, does the council prefer we proceed under the authority of the existing resolution? I believe there was a set amount there, um, or, uh, and, and do we need to request additional funding? Even though we are hoping to have, uh, the funding reimbursed from the project charge award. I hope, I hope I cleared that up, Mr. Harry.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm just, I mean, cause if you're gonna do all of that, you're, you're never gonna make June thirtieth. You gotta have that money at least invoiced or expensed or, or encumbered. By June the thirtieth. Um, so you, ah, I mean, cause if you're gonna do it, you need to move forward with it and do it. Um, waiting for a committee to form.
So no, we're gonna go with the event. I'm, I'm talking about the committee to be able to maintain and manage the actual community garden. According to the resolution, I believe a committee was, uh, to be formed to be able to help with the volunteerism and, and that particular process. That, that part is what I'm referring to. I'd like to have the event and have the event, uh, completed. Uh, based upon discussions, uh, we've had about, uh, getting the reimbursed by the project charge award. So I'm talking about committee on one level, and then I'm talking about the event, which are, which, which are essentially two separate things.
So for the committee though, but, I mean. I guess I'm, I'm seeing, I mean, again, you're, you're going into June and your growing season is shrinking. You know, and I'm sure people are ready to get started, so. I mean, I'm like, let them go. Um, I think we can, we can form the committee as we go along, and then you can learn as you go along what you gotta improve on, but. Uh, you know how hard it is to get a committee together in this city, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're definitely ready to go and, and the plot assignments will be assigned this week, and they'll be able to go in and start planting and gardening. I was more or less, uh, referring to the committee as, as it relates to the long haul of the community garden, if that makes sense.
What's the makeup of the committee?
Um, hey, let me try to pull up the resolution. It'll be made up of residents who actually had plots as well as, uh, a council member. Uh, if they were. Open to being a part of the committee.
Councilman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. The purpose of the committee is to ensure that the community garden just doesn't go by the wayside in terms of its look and stuff. And so that's why, um, the idea was to comprise the committee of people who are, um, who do have. Plots so that they would be, have a vested interest in making sure, you know, the weeds were pulled up, that things were being taken care of. If there were other people whose plots were not being taken care of, making sure that that was being, um, that awareness was being raised. To the administration, so that the administration could follow up and enforce the rules and regulations around the community garden.
Okay. Anything else you need from us, Mr. Simpson?
No, I'll follow up with an email to get feedback. Thank you, Councilman Harry, thank you, Councilman Fareed.
Okay, uh, the last topic of discussion was the amended, uh, topic, uh, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna, I have a question about this letter that went out, cause I'm getting questions from citizens about it. Um, first of all, I think the way it went out wasn't right, wasn't correct. Um, I'm not sure on whose authority it was given. Was given to send it out. Again, that, the letter was, that, that legislation was voted on by the full council. The legislation was enacted by the full council, and the full council should have said how the legislation should be communicated to the residents. And what should be in that letter. Um, and citizens are asking me again, the letter saying that, you know, our ordinance is in compliance with state and county laws, which is inaccurate. State and county does not have anywhere where they say you cannot park your personal vehicle, your personal van or pickup truck on the streets. Um, again, I ask that it be held off until I bring back the legislation to be voted on. And again, if I, if the vote goes favorable and the legislation becomes, the legislation is amended, then that section comes out. So you're gonna have to mail out another letter saying that that's no longer applic, applicable? Um, so I'm not understanding why we spent all this money to mail this out to citizens when, again, it was, uh, uh. Uh, the legislation was gonna be coming back up and I, I'm not sure I got the four votes to, to amend it. Um, and what was the big rush to do this? Also, the letter is completely inaccurate that it goes into effect on July first. Uh, council member cannot sit there and say when a piece of legislation goes into effect, when it's a council piece of the legislation, the council voted on it. It should go on, the, the council had a. It should go on, the council had a moratorium on it until June eleventh. So technically, the legislation goes into effect on June the twelfth. There was no vote done to extend that moratorium past June the twelfth, past June eleventh. So I'm just trying to figure out who or why this letter was sent out, and why was this money expensed? When, again, a consensus of a vote of the council, of four council members was not given to send it out.
Councilman Harry, Councilman Fareed.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance was passed several months ago, and ordinances are effective upon passage. The letter itself was sent to the council, and it was sent to the council after a challenge to the original ordinance was done. I will also say that the ordinance that was passed was passed lawfully. It went through the proper procedures to have a hearing and to be voted on by the council. And the council passed that. It it passed with six votes out of seven. The ordinance was also sponsored by five council members. Placing a moratorium by consensus on a law is not lawful. We have a process in this city that we follow by which we bring forth resolutions to be discussed. We hear from the public on those, and then we take a formal vote. You cannot override an ordinance, which is a law, by a consensus of the council. There was no resolution or ordinance brought forward to place a moratorium on that ordinance. Nonetheless, because an ordinance amendment was brought forth, I did not challenge the moratorium and allowed for that process to play out, to hear from the public. That also went through the proper channels of having a work session, having public discussion and a vote. And the vote failed. The letter was prepared because the ordinance was already way past when it should have been implemented. The letter was sent to the entire council for comment. The comments received back from the council in terms of what should or should not be in the letter was included, and then the letter was sent out. I will also say that when the letter was sent out, there were, there was a timeline for when things would be done for the letter to be completed and for it to be sent out. Nothing is illegal in the ordinance. As we've heard numerous times from this same council, we cannot have our rules be less restrictive than the county or the state, but we, as a municipality, can enforce rules that are more strict. As it relates to commercial vehicles themselves, the ordinance that was duly passed and is law in the city of Glen Arden, that is in compliance with both the county and the state. The size of the logos is in compliance with the county. The terms around the personal vehicles that are of the same size as the work vehicles that we're saying should be placed in driveways was challenged, and that amendment failed. It would be legislative obstruction to not enforce duly legislated laws in the city of Glen Arden on the idea that another amendment could possibly come up again and be passed. That is improper. That is not how we operate in the city of Glen Arden. We have never operated in that way, and it would be unlawful to do otherwise. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, Mr. President, now she said all of that to say that, so who authorized this letter to go out? You said all of that to say what? You authorized this letter to go out? The letter, this law, as you said at least ten times, this was a council action. The council approved it, five council members voted on it, five council members sponsored it, one council member sent the letter out without authority from the rest of the council who voted on that. This legislation is not your legislation. This legislation comes to the floor, it becomes council legislation. And the council should have took it under their responsibility to send the letter out or authorize the letter to be sent out, not because you wanted to go out. It is not your legislation, it's the council's legislation. And again, you did, you said all of that to say what? I'm just trying to figure out. I asked who sent the letter out, who authorized it, and you're saying all of that to say what? And again, the the letter does not meet. The letter is not, it is illegal to put in there that this this moratorium, I mean, that the legislation goes into effect on July first, because you don't have the authority to make that decision. You just sat there and said, the decision was made that the law goes into effect immediately. The council can put a moratorium on anything they want to do, and we did not take a consensus on that. You weren't at the meeting, we took a vote in a public meeting. And the charter says no action shall be taken unless done in public by a group of at least four council members. Four council members at a public meeting can say, we're going to put a moratorium on this for thirty days, I mean, for ninety days, which is what happened. We were at a public meeting, there's a public hearing, and they had concerns. And the council did exactly what they're legally allowed to do. The county has a moratorium on pit bulls. The law is still in place, but they're not enforcing it. Same, and so I guess you need to run down there and file a charge against the county council. So again, my question is, who gave you the authority to send that letter out when you didn't get when you didn't get permission from the council who approved the legislation and who enforces the legislation? So all of that, what you said was very nice, it was sweet and kind and everything else that you wanted to make it out to be, but you didn't answer the question. Again, why didn't you come to the council body and request that? You can send it out, and if you don't get a response from the council, then you can't do it. You sent out, you sent out an email to the council notifying us is one thing, but getting a response back from us is another. You didn't get to have a response back from this council. You decided to take it upon yourself, and then when, and if the legislation is overturned, we got to send out another letter. Because for some odd reason, you're in a big rush to put this out there and get people's personal vehicles off the street. Thank you.
Councilman Fareed, did you have another comment?
Yes, Council President. It has not been this council's practice to pass communications that are going out to the city to all council members before going out. There have been numerous mailings, which I have not received until I received it in the mail as a council member. So this idea that's being introduced that any council member has to get permission from the majority of the council in order to send out a communication is absolutely false. I sent out a communication to the council for comment. I received comments back from some and not from the others. I did not send out the letter for permission to send the letter. I sent the letter with the information it would be included for the council members to be able to weigh in on. That letter could have absolutely gone out and said that this is effective immediately. But considering the fact that there had been some back and forth around that, I thought that putting thirty days period to allow people to adjust accordingly was fair, particularly those who have to find parking for their vehicles outside of the city because of the fact that we are saying commercial vehicles are no longer allowed in the city. No one expressed any concern around that being too long of a period to allow for people to have. And the one concern that was expressed was around the logo, and that information was added, and then the letter was sent out.
Thank you, Councilman Fareed.
President, one other thing, let me just say this real quick. Once again, it is not your legislation, it is the council's legislation. And the council has a right to say what goes out. Sure, there's a lot of communications, if you want to send a letter out on your own, more power to you, you're going to do that under your name. But this piece of legislation was sponsored by seven members, I mean, was approved by a majority of this council. And a majority of them, council members had a right to say when it should and should not start. And here you talking about breaking the law, you have no authority, absolutely none, to violate the law and say that this goes into effect on July first, when our moratorium ends it, ended on, ends on July, on June eleventh. So it goes into effect on June the twelfth. You can't arbitrarily, on your own, think it's on, because you think it's fair, say that this legislation goes into effect July first. It isn't, it doesn't go into effect July first. Technically, it goes into effect on June the twelfth. After the moratorium ends, that this council legally and fairly put out there to give people a chance to look at this legislation and see what happens and see where it's going to go. So again, you keep on talking about the law and this and that, and that, you violated the law on your own, just by saying you're going to put this, you're going to get them to July first. I haven't heard now one council member say that we're going to extend it past June eleventh, which is what the council said. And this, again, is a council body, not one council member's position or one council member wants or needs. And as for mailers that go out, there's a lot of mailers that go out, I don't say nothing about them. But in this situation, we're talking about a mailing going out that just made a decision by this council, this full council, a body of seven, that's who made the decision. Not one council member, or because you think your name is on it, or five council members' names are on it, that you can do without the consent of the rest of the council or the other people who support it, or even those who didn't support it. Thank you.
So I'll go to Councilwoman Fareed in a second, but I just want to chime in here. To be fair, Councilwoman Fareed did send this to everyone, so it wasn't as if though, you know, this was done in secret. I know you responded, Councilman Harry, and I saw Councilwoman Jones respond, I know I responded. So this was, I mean, she did send it out for feedback from all of the council members. And so I just wanted to put that in there because there was some feedback, but there was, and there was a timeline attached to it for the correspondence to go out. So council members did have an opportunity to speak before the timeline and to to change the date. And, you know, there's some points made, but, you know, we did have opportunity to respond. But there wasn't any, any additional responses that, in my opinion, would have halted that communication. But with that being said, I'll move to the two comments of the hands we have, which is Councilwoman Fareed, and then I'll go to Vice President Ferguson.
Thank you. I just want to speak on a moratorium and an ordinance and why we have the process that we have in the city of Glen Arden, as has been articulated numerous times by those council members who were on council prior to this term. The reason why we have the process that we have in the process, that we have in the city is to prevent council members from taking action that is contrary to what has been enforced already or already passed. Meaning, when you want to make a motion or make a change, especially to a law, and let me remind everyone that the order of things in this city is charter, ordinances, resolutions, and then consensus. You cannot take a consensus as a formal action on an ordinance that has already been passed. We're not talking about an ordinance that was still in a work session or still up for public comment. The ordinance was already passed. So the council cannot, even if all seven members wanted to, cannot in a single meeting say, we are going to override what the law says. The proper way to handle something like that is to bring forth a resolution or an ordinance to say, we will have a moratorium to allow the public to comment on that. Because there are people in this city who were pleased with the ordinance that was already passed. So they did not have an opportunity to come forward and say, no, I do not want this moratorium in place. And then it was not voted on. So there was not a proper process followed to even put the moratorium on. So the moratorium is not legal. Again, a consensus cannot override an already voted in ordinance. A motion cannot be made to override a law, a motion cannot be made to override the charter. That is not the proper process. And while that may have been the will of the council of the six that were there, because I was not at that meeting, it was not a proper thing to do. That is not how we conduct business in the city of Glen Arden. We do this every single month. We have a work session where we bring forward legislation to discuss. We have a public hearing for the public to give their opinion on that, and then we vote on it. That is the proper process, not the council deciding that they want to overturn a law that has already been enacted. Thank you, Council President.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I just want, wanted to say for the record, I think the latter part of twenty twenty four, I sent out an email requesting that emails be sent to my aide Ferguson at the city of Glen Arden. Because I, for some reason, I cannot get emails when they're sent to the council group. So I did not, I was not aware of that email that Councilwoman Fareed sent out until Friday, after I received several calls and texts from citizens complaining about the information that they've got in the mail, saying that it was going to be reinstated. The other thing is, while that we did take a consensus or vote, or whatever you want to call it, to halt the enforcement, it went forth, no one said anything, and now now all of a sudden it's illegal, whether it is or not. It was, it was stopped. And and just as well as the citizens, there were many citizens that came out. And that, and that was why it was reconsidered or challenged as far as the the fines were concerned. And we've had meetings since then. So I disagree with the fact that the citizens that did want that didn't have a chance to come and say anything and say that they didn't like the fact that it wasn't being enforced, because they could have come to the work, the regular meeting and complained about the fact that, hey, you know, this is what we wanted, and now it's not, you know, it's not being enforced. So, again, you know, I just think that, like I said, I did not respond because I wasn't aware of the of the email. Because then, you know, had I was, I probably would have, I know I was one of the sponsors, but after the influx of people coming, after it was, you know, it was made law, I mean, we thought to reconsider. So, thank you, Council President. And in the future, until things get right, with my email, please send emails to, if you're going to send it to the council group, also CCB is Angela Ferguson at the city of Glen Arden, so that I can get the information. Because sometimes I don't always go to the council group, and I really should have to. Because the email was designed to to get both your personal and the council, and the council group. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilman Fareed.
Thank you, Council President. I think we are forgetting the fact that an ordinance was put forward to amend that section of the resolution. And it failed. It did not pass. So this was not ignoring public comment, this was not ignoring public sentiment and allowing that process to play out. What I don't understand is, why didn't that ordinance pass? There were five council members who voted on that amendment, and it did not pass. So I think it's unfair to paint this picture as though the public is being ignored or nothing was done in proper order. An amendment was put forward to challenge that portion of the ordinance, and it did not prevail. And just as citizens who, it's being said, could come because they heard what was going on after the ordinance was passed, all the citizens who had concerns and comments could have made comments during the public comment period on the ordinance before it was passed. This portion of the legislation around the personal vehicles was never hidden. This portion of the legislation around the personal vehicles was never hidden. It was discussed. It was discussed in the work session. It was discussed at the public hearing. It was discussed during voting. So this was not a secret portion that anyone, including the sponsors, co-sponsors of the ordinance. Were not aware of. And again, when that challenge was brought forward through an amendment, it failed. That was the trigger to say, okay, we've gone forward, we've heard what. All signs have had to say, an amendment was put forward and it has failed. So it is time for us to now move on with the ordinance that was already. Lawfully enacted. Thank you, Council President. I don't have anymore.
Alright, well with that, we can move on. Alright, next. It's the budget. So I will um. Pull up the budget on the, on my screen so we can go along. Um, actually, before we get start with diving into the budget. Uh, well, as part of the budget, uh, we'll start off with the um, the constant yield rate. And then we'll just jump right in with uh any questions or amendments that um council members may have. Uh, how we want to go through it, if you wanna go through it uh.
Excuse me, uh, Council President. I ain't mean to cut you, but uh, uh, Councilwoman Jones's hand is up. I'm not sure if she had a question or not. I'm not sure if you saw, or Councilwoman Jones, I don't know if she had a question.
Councilwoman Jones, did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to make a statement as we go through the budget. As we go through the budget, I would appreciate whatever that we bring to the floor for consensus. Be uh acknowledged and be done by a voce- a, a voice vote. So the, and also recorded in the minutes so that there'll be clarity for the administration to understand what the pleasure of the council is. And that we will understand what it is that we're doing also. Any consensus that, that are taken throughout the budget, I believe should also, should be uh written in the minutes and should be given. Made clear that the administration will understand what it is that we wanna do. I'm not sure how many things will come up for consensus, but anything that comes up for consensus, I would appreciate that we have uh. Clear clarity and clear direction for the administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Alright, um, are there any other comments before I move forward? Just um, don't wanna miss anybody?
Yes, Miss President.
Councilman Harrion?
I just wanna be clear on how, so we're gonna let the administration chime in or what? Because I guess, I guess my issue is, again, I'm trying to get an understanding on where. The mayor actually was going with this budget, because I was looking at, I was reading some of the language in here, and I was trying to figure out. Um, some of the things that she said in here, why? You know, um, that's in her letter, and I just wanna understand why she's saying like, you know, there won't be a tax increase when there. Is technically a tax increase.
Okay, yeah, this is, I mean, it's whatever the will of the council is um. Uh, the work session, like I said, probably a lengthy meeting tonight. Uh, so we can hear from the mayor, we can hear from the administration. Uh, it's whatever the pleasure is of the council, I know everyone ha- at this point has probably gone through it. Um, and so we'll just take it from there. I did speak with Mr. uh Wood and Mr. Simpson earlier when I was at the municipal center. I know that first, uh, we wanted to talk about the constant yield that leads into the budget. Um, and then open it up to, to council to ask questions of the mayor and of the, of the administration and make any. Uh, adjustments uh, uh, that you guys have already marked up in your budgets, uh, and things like that. And then we, I mean. Depending on where council wants to stop, uh, we could stop and set up another meeting, uh, to continue to work. Uh, I think we were at eight forty now. Um, so. If it's the pleasure of the council, we can uh move forward with the. Uh, addressing the constant yield, and then we can get into um. After that, Councilman Harrion, if you want, you could start off with the uh mayor's letter, uh, and we can start there if that's okay. Any opposition to that format? Okay. Alright, so first, we'll just, the administration will talk about the uh constant yield. Mr. Simpson?
Yes, yes, yes. The city of Glen Arden last adjusted its real property tax rate in fiscal year twenty twenty three, setting it. Uh, at zero point three 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 eight per one hundred of assessed value. This rate was retained to maintain revenue despite raising property assessments, rather than lowering the rate to the constant yield of. Point three two seven three. Prior to this, the city maintained a rate of point three four eight one in both FY twenty twenty one and FY twenty twenty two. Proposed adjustments, uh, and, and we're suggesting this because of time sensitivity. Uh, required the rate to maintain services at point three nine four seven. Uh, current rate point three 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 eight. The difference, of course, being point zero six oh nine or eighteen point two percent. The property tax impact, the following uh table reflects how the proposed increase affects various assessed property values. So we looked at a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, and five hundred thousand. So with that, we're looking at uh, a monthly increase, uh, if at a hundred and fifty thousand assessed value. Of seven dollars sixty one cents or approximately ninety one dollars thirty five cents for the year, three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, fifteen twenty three a month or a hundred eighty two point seventy uh for the year. Uh, and five hundred thousand at uh twenty five thirty eight a month. Regional comparison, and I just uh pointed out, just named a few. Uh municipalities in there, uh FY twenty twenty five, real property tax rate, Bourbon Heights. Uh, they're at point five one eight seven, Capital Heights, uh, point three eight oh one. Cottage City, four nine five four, District Heights, uh, point six eight seven oh. Morningside, point seven eight hundred, Chevrolet, point fifty four hundred, and Sea Pleasant at point. Five eight zero zero. Even with the proposed increase to three four, three. And Glen Arden would remain below several of the, of our peer municipalities while positioning itself to better meet operational needs. So in summary, we, 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 we are suggesting, uh, it required a rate of. Point three nine four seven to maintain the current level of services in Glen Arden. The current rate of point three 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 eight represents a shortfall of about uh point zero six oh nine, which equates to. Uh, well, we, we talked about that as far as real property. Um, the increase reflects a responsible approach to preserving essential city operations and services amid. Rising operational costs and resident needs. Now, during our earlier budget development discussions. Uh, prior to submission of the proposed budget, various strategies were talked about um to close the project, the, the funding gap. One such was to consider the use of a little over five hundred K uh from the city's reserves. And after careful review, the treasurer and I determined that the method wouldn't be fiscally sustainable. Our reserves are critical not only for emergency preparedness, but also for maintaining the city's overall financial health. Including credit standing and future budget flexibility. U- utilizing such a substantial portion of reserves in a single year would establish a structural deficit. And, and weakening our ability to respond to future needs without further strain. As such, we're recommending that the rate adjust meant not as a first choice. But as uh what we believe is the most responsible balance and future-focused solution to ensure Glen Arden remains stable while. Continuing to provide the vital services. Ultimately, the decision we know on the tax rate rests with the council. Uh, our recommendation is presented in the spirit of responsible stewardship. And we stand ready to implement the course of action the council determines uh is best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and so for the council, I, I think the decision is um. Uh, wha- what has been expressed is that if, if the council wishes to, to adjust the um. Constant yield rate, then uh the administration needs to know, uh, Mr. Stewart needs to know now. So that the proper communication can go out. Um, so I think that, that. Uh, as it has been communi- communicated is the um, the most pressing issue. So open the floor to council members if there are any opposition to us moving forward with the. Constant yield rate that has been presented in the budget.
President, the, the budget does not have that rate in it that we have. Correct, Mr. uh Simpson?
Does not.
Huh?
The, the, the budget currently has the point three 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 eight uh as recommended by the mayor.
You're recommended taking a, raising the tax straight up to a point three six?
Yeah, hold on, uh.
Alright, point three nine.
Three nine, yes.
Okay. Um, can I share my screen right quick? Cuz I, I, I pulled together something, cuz. Let's see. Um, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can see the screen.
And it's the Excel spreadsheet, so.
Uh, no, no, it just, it just went off. It, we did see the Excel spreadsheet. Now just see the, the screen saver or the back screen.
Hold on, I'm setting, I got the wrong one. Okay, so um, you make it bigger.
We, we can't see it.
You can't see it?
Uh, and I see a lake, a beautiful lake, but just a lake with trees and the mountains.
Okay, let me unshare. Let me stop sharing and share it again. Alright, let me try again. Alright. You see it now?
Yep, we see it.
So basically, I put together this spreadsheet, cuz this really concerned me, because again, um. What Mr. Simpson is saying, technically, the budget has a deficit. Um, if you see right here, the total revenue that we're getting from taxes and fees and everything comes up to six million. Uh, ten thousand dollars. Um, we're pulling five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from our uh reserves. And that gives us our total revenue, as you see in the budget, of six thousand five hundred and twenty eight. That's a lot of money. From our savings to balance this budget. So technically, only way this budget is gonna be balanced, i- and that, and that's just from operations. So we can't even fully fund our operations with the revenue that we're currently pulling in. Um, just on property taxes and um, uh, our regular fees. As a matter of fact, taxes have, um, party taxes have gone up. I mean, well, income has gone up because of the assessed value of the homes have gone up. But also, I went through um the rest of the budget, and we're using general fund reserves for that. We're gonna use twenty five thousand in general fund reserves for the farmer's market. We're gonna use three point two million dollars of uh general fund reserves for capital projects. So um, the total funds that we're gonna have coming from our savings account is about three point seven million dollars. Um, looking at our savings as of April twenty twenty five, the report I got on our last report, we had seven point seven million dollars in savings. We're gonna take almost half of that um, and use it for. You know, uh, capital projects and everything else. If we do all our capital projects this year and everything else. You know, it'll take our reserves down to three point four million dollars, three point nine million dollars. Um, and if we continue without taking a rate up, we would spend down this by. Closing the gaps in the budget, cuz it's gonna continue to be a deficit in the budget, because we're not bringing in enough now. And that's only for operations. We could only last four years before this is completely depleted. Um, so technically, we really do need to take that rate up. Because again, um, eventually, you're gonna have to do it, either do six cents now or twelve cents late, four years down the road. You know, and it, it'd be even higher. So I think that's something we really need to look at, because I, I really technically. Again, we are in a deficit, the budget has a deficit, and the only way we're not. We, we're eliminating that deficit is pulling money out of our savings account, and I think that's a very dangerous thing to do, and, and half a million dollars each year. And you're gonna have to continue to do that year after year, because you gotta look at the fact that we have no more new businesses coming into the city. We have nothing, I can't think of one piece of land where we can get a business that's gonna bring in five hundred thousand dollars. We lost. Party cities, so that's personal property taxes that's gone. And um. So, and then again, I, and I'm, I'm gonna bring it up, we got a twenty thousand dollar retirement fund that we got to fund now. So um, you know, it's almost, you almost have to in order to close this budget debt. I mean, this budget deficit that we have, because again, you'll, if you don't close it now, you're gonna have to close it eventually. And by that time, you may have been spent down all your uh reserves, and we just still don't know. When we get this police building going, how much may, we may have to come out of our pocket with that. Again, with the um, state being um, you know. Labeled as a sanctuary state and the county being labeled as a sanctuary county and. This federal government saying they're gonna stop giving grants to those who support illegal immigration, and we just passed a resolution. Saying we are a sanctuary city, you know, we don't know if we're gonna get any more funding. So we might have to come out of our reserves, just even if fund a police department or fund some of our other capital projects. So this is not the time to um really not um. You know, address this issue, because again, this is only gonna get worse. This deficit here is, uh, will only get worse each year. And if the market turns down and housing prices go down, you're gonna be in a lot of trouble. I mean, I know. People said I tried a scare tactic last time, but this is exactly what I was talking about when we were doing what we were doing. Um, you never know, so. Alright, thank you. I just wanted to put that out there.
So, so Councilman Harrion, uh, so you are in agreement with uh Mr. Simpson and administration? With the thirty nine, with the thirty nine cent?
We really don't have a choice. We gotta, we gotta close this deficit, and we can't fund races when I, when I say. Uh, I, I, I agree, we have to do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from uh council about moving the rate from thirty three to thirty nine percent? Uh, well, with this, I'll, I guess I'll go through and get a, a voice vote. Well, not voice vote, but a consensus. Uh, about moving it to thirty nine percent?
Uh, Mr. Mr. President? Be clear, thirty nine cent.
Thirty nine cents, sorry. I'm thinking about percentages right now. Thirty nine cent or one hundred uh dollars, right?
Yes. Can I, can I get in here?
Sure.
Okay, so it's thirty nine forty seven. Thirty nine forty seven, so it's thirty nine point or point three nine four seven.
Per one hundred.
Per one hundred dollars.
Say it again, three nine one seven?
Three nine four seven.
Four seven, sorry. Per one hundred. Bear Cross, I'm sorry, Mr. Simpson, not Mr. Simpson, Mr. Stewart, were you done?
Uh, not totally. Um, I have to get this information as quick as possible, because it has to go through. The um, the publication process, which is seven days. So we need to make a, a move as soon as possible.
Okay. Bear Cross, I see your hand. Did you have? Comment?
Yes, thank you, Council President, and I want.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and I wanted to respond to Councilman Herring's inquiry inquiry. Uh, my concern is with as many of our residents who have lost their jobs, particularly federal jobs. And as many of our residents who will find no particular services. And we fought hard to keep the blueprint for Maryland's future, and also to keep a lot of legislation. That will help fund our school-aged children to be able to eat uh, and continue to learn in peace. But what we have here is a community that's right now really going to find a. Big hurt when it comes down to basic textiles, food products. We see the price of everything on the rise. Uh, one of the concerns that I had is that the constant tax yield came in. At zero point three-two-one-zero. Uh, what I'd ask for them to do is to hold at what we was used to paying, which was zero point three-three-three-eight. Which would not press any additional undue stress on our citizens. So my concern is for the people who are already struggling, many of which to pay their bills based on. Uh, so much of the federal legislative changes that have happened. Now, when it comes down to this budget, yes, we are in a deficit of five hundred eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. But I think it's unfair if we don't contend with why that has happened. So Councilman Herring hit on it there for a moment, when he spoke to uh, a lot of the elevations. That we've put in the community, the community gardens, uh, he talked about the capital projects, the installation. Of various projects that are on the forefront, i.e. the city hall elevator, the road resurfacing, sidewalk improvements. Tremendous amount of sidewalk improvements, which we needed, and then also the ADA compliance. I I also want to acknowledge that that in addition, that's the capital budget projects that. You know, many of which we are still trying to fund. Um, the issue that we have also. Uh, Councilman Herring also brought this up, is the almost two hundred thousand dollars that we have to pay in the retirement fund. There has been a projection going forward um, to continue to increase. By three percent, which was not favorably received, obviously, by the administration in as much as they have now. Presented against what we originally agreed to present, um, an increased rate of zero point three-nine-four-seven. Rather than protect the citizenry at this moment, we all should pay into the protection of keeping Glenn Arden running. Uh, one of the the concerns that we have is, of course, the business license activity. And with so many of the storefronts there off of Martin Luther King, uh, not bringing in an exceeding amount of revenue. In so many storefronts in Woodmore Town Center, not being fulfilled, where we're happy to see Five Guys are coming. But like Party City is a big one that we lost. So I think we press into getting our. Thriving community back up with the infrastructure improvements in the local economy, uh, supporting our small businesses. And at this time, I believe that it's very important that we protect the local citizens, because an increase. Um, even at thirty-nine cents, thirty-nine point to three-nine-four-seven. I recall a few years ago, the citizens didn't even want to take it up eleven cents. So even with my proposal, we only going to take it up one penny. But I think that it is very important that in the next steps, that we use smart prudence when it comes down to. Our budget, that three percent COLA, which is included in the FY twenty-six budget for all employees. Will ultimately decide really the final compensation for our city employees, which, you know, again, that's part of the reserve. And not to mention, we've had several projects uh, where, you know, hundreds, thousands of dollars have been given out. To try and heal from COVID nineteen relief monies. Uh, we had a major five hundred dollar tax rebate. In third iteration, that's giving money out of the budget as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, but I just want some clarification on how many citizens have been affected by the federal government. Issues that have come out before, I know that um. Mayor Cross made a statement saying that there are citizens, it seemed like what she's saying, there's a lot of citizens. I'd like to know how many citizens have been affected, an actual count. As has, that have been affected by the federal government's initiatives. Before we start putting those types of things out.
Are you asking that of me, or are you asking that of Mayor Cross?
No, I'm just putting that out so that that it somewhere along the line, maybe some citizens will call in to the city hall. And say that they've been affected by, have lost their jobs, or she has some type of data that supports what she's saying, or um. That we can get the citizens in the city of Glen Arden that have been affected by the federal government initiatives. To come speak up and let us know that this is uh, uh, we have a dire problem in the city of Glen Arden with this. And then I do have one comment concerning. Seven, I mean, why don't we just take it up to dot four oh? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on the um. The constant yield rate. Of point three-nine-four-seven versus the point three-three? Okay, then I will. Go around and take a census so that um. Staff can do the proper advertising, and this is to go up to the. Point three-nine-four-seven. Uh, a yes to go up to that number, and and a no to um, to not go up to that number. Uh, I should first should ask, is there any other proposed rate? Council members? All right. Here none? Yes, to go up to thirty-nine. Forty-seven and no to not and stick with the uh, point three-three that the mayor proposed in her budget. So Madam Clerk, could you go around, please?
Councilwoman Freed? Councilman Hairston?
Yes. This is to go up?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
And Councilman Freed?
Uh, that was, it passes. Oh, the census has been held, and so. Uh, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wood, uh, you guys will do the necessary. Um, administrative work to uh, properly advertise it. Um, uh, do we have to have another public hearing? For this rate?
The advertisement is to have the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Um, so then we'll need to get the uh, communication out as quickly as possible.
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh, who was that? Oh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Harry.
So what is the, what is the uh, proposed date for the public hearing, uh, Mrs. Stewart or Mr. Simpson?
Okay, so um, we get the ad out to the publishers tomorrow. They will put it in the um. The publication for Wednesday, so we're looking at seven days after Wednesday.
Are you sure? Uh, Miss uh, Council Clerk, do you know the timeline I? To get something in the paper?
Um, it has, actually, it's Monday. Monday by noon, for for publication on Thursday.
On this Thursday?
Yes.
And so because we did not have it, so then it has to be. On. Next Monday. To be in Thursday's paper.
Yes.
And then it'll have to be two weeks after that, right? Mr. Stewart?
They they give us seven, it's seven days to fourteen days for the um. Yes.
So they will put the publication on Thursday the twelfth. Which will put the uh, public hearing on at the earliest, the nineteenth of. Of um.
June.
June. Uh, does it answer your question?
Uh, isn't that too late? The the state needs the number by the fifteenth. Am I correct?
Yes, they need about a fifteen.
So we have to vote on something by the fifteenth?
Okay.
What paper are you using?
We're going to use Prince George's Post. And also, and also we'll run it through the um, the website. Our website.
Is it required to be in a, is it required to be in a newspaper?
Uh, the. Um, S dot really asks that it um, be published. So that citizens are aware of it, and they should get at least seven days. Before we could um, go forward with it.
Does it say published in a a a a? Paper of general circulation?
Uh, well, yes, yes.
You may want to check the Washington Post to see if you can get it in that. I mean, it's expensive, but we'll never meet the deadline if we do, if we do it. We gotta have something to them. So we gotta have the hearing before we can send them the number, because it may not pass. You never know.
Yes, they have to get this number before, because they have to certify that, yes, it has gone through the publication process, yes.
So I mean, yeah, I need to look at that and see how you want, I mean, it needs to be in a paper, really, like, no later than Wednesday. But you just need to find another paper.
Um, maybe we could do some shopping around tomorrow, just to make sure that we could get it in this week. When I say this week, I'm talking about by Wednesday. The latest.
Yeah, and I think the only paper that you're going to be able to get that in is. The Washington Post, I don't know if the Washington Times, or I don't even know if they're even still around. Yeah, so, yeah, all right.
Okay. Okay, uh, just keep us updated so that we can properly advertise and then put um. Something on the book so that we get something into them by the fifteenth. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, will do.
All right. Uh, and it it may be that we need, I mean, if we move, we need to move as soon as possible, so if if the. The paper we're discussing was noon at on Monday. Then, you know, the next, the Washington Post might be noon on Tuesday, so just, we need to hop on that, really. Um, tonight, so we can, first thing in the morning, um, or at at the very least, first thing in the morning. So that by noon, we can know where we're going to go with this publication.
Yes, so I have the ad already, um. All I need to do is um, find the newspaper, so we'll work on that first thing in the morning.
Okay. All right. Okay, and are there any other questions related to the constant yield? All right, we'll move on. Uh, we can start off with uh, any questions related to the mayor's report, budget report. And then we can get into the budget itself. Ms. Herring, I know you had, Councilman Herring, sorry, I know you had some questions based on the report, so. We can move forward with that.
Um, she answered the question, I I did want to um. Yeah, she did, and she answered my question already about what her reasoning was for why she proposed what she proposed. I guess my other thing with um. Oh, that's it, yeah, if if we're going to take the rate up, then my other question has been answered, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And I've been told Mr. Stewart is going, is going to be doing some um. Real-time adjustments. Uh, and Mr. Stewart, do you already have a a budget with the, the a second version of the budget with the? Um. The point three-nine-four-seven?
Um, yes, I do, um.
Yeah. And, all right, cool, so we'll see that with the next iteration of the. The budget after we go through what we go through tonight.
Yes, and with any additional adjustment that are asked for tonight, I will be doing those edits also.
Okay. All right, well, let me pull up the budget. Now pull the Excel version. Share. Can you guys see my screen? Can you guys see the budget, anybody?
We can see it.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. I guess we just go through these tab items one by one. And get to it. Uh. We'll start out with the administration.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Uh, a comment on this, and I I did talk to um. Uh, Mr. Stewart and the city manager and assistant city manager about this presentation and that. I would like to see. The FY actual FY twenty-two taken off, because we really don't need to see that information, and that we have actual FY twenty-three. Actual FY twenty-four. FY twenty-five actual year-to-date. So that we can see where we're actually moving with this budget, and but um. With the numbers that are looking like from year to year, because right now, I'm I'm not really, I can't really see. How we're moving when it comes down from year to year, and if we, you know, what we're doing is. I mean, if we're increasing or decreasing or whatever. So I'm just asking that they make that a. Make those corrections. Um, it doesn't give a clear picture of how you're moving over a three-year period right now, because you have twenty-two, twenty-three. Then you got a budget at twenty-four, a budget at twenty-five, and a budget at twenty-six. So you don't know if the two point nine that you have budgeted is. You know, whatever, and that's and that's the way it is to the whole budget, so I'm just asking to take, clean that up. And make sure the variance column, the change column. Calculating from the right uh, column, twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Pull the administrative budget?
I do, right quick, um, on, so again, seeing this is why I need the actuals. So how much have we collected so far? In um. Income tax individual. I mean, are we, are we on? Course to meet budget for FY twenty-five?
Um, yes, so far, we are doing well, um. We received approximately a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand this week. Uh, which bring us closer to the individual income tax um, amount. Um, and I'm expecting that the end of this month will round off. And it may be a little more or a little less than what we. And it may be a little more or a little less than what we have budgeted.
Okay, and I noticed um, on um. If you go down to. On the summary page. Um, the fingerprinting. The revenue for fingerprinting is going down by uh seventy percent. And um, it's be the first tab, uh, Mr. President, FY twenty five summary. And scroll down. There's fingerprinting down there. Um. Under licenses and, what is that? Licenses and permits?
So you need to go up, up to where the revenues are?
Sorry, I have to sign into Microsoft Windows again, one second. All right, there we go. Let me. Do to normal. Okay, so, all right, so what'd you say, Councilman, uh, Mr. Stewart?
You could go up, go up. To where the revenues are, yes. And these are revenues now, so stop right there. So there we have fingerprinting, fingerprint live scan. Mr. Herring?
Yeah, so that's dropped by like, what, seventy percent and fifty percent? The income for twenty twenty six?
Okay, so as you see, twenty five was the budget that we had. Uh, we are not expecting that amount to come in, that forty thousand. Um, after really checking what's going on with with um. With our earnings for this year. Uh, we think twelve thousand would be reasonable.
Okay. Same thing for a live scan?
And um, live scan is not necessarily a revenue for us. It's a pass through. So whatever we receive, we actually paid out back to CEGIS.
Well, that's only thirty one fifty or thirty dollars. But the twenty dollars we, is revenue to us.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Another question. Um, the Maryland State Police, Maryland State Aid for Police Protection, we show we getting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars? I just wanna be sure we getting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We got it in the budget and they're not gonna cut it or anything. So.
Oh, for that, um. We have seen a trend going up. So that two twenty would be reasonable, given what we have been receiving. But I don't know, given what's going on. In the, you know, the arena right now with the current um. Government, what will happen if we'll get all of this money?
Let's see that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I thi- I think there may be some cuts, but I'm not sure. But I saw the trend that we have is that we're getting up to that amount.
Have anybody reached out to them to see if there has, I mean, cuz there have been some major cuts in um, state, state government funding. And I just wanna make sure that we're not got, we don't have this in here. Um. And we're not gonna get it cuz we, so you're saying we we're gonna go from like a hundred and four thousand dollars? That's why we need the actuals in here, cuz what we, what do we actually have for FY twenty five?
What are you looking at, guys? I'm sorry, Councilman, what are you looking at?
Go down under intergovernmental. See right there, it says two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that grant the police, police state aid. And I just, we're gonna get that, cuz that's a big jump from one hundred and four to two hundred and twenty in its current um, environment. Where everybody's running a deficit. So, Mr. Stewart, you're saying, you're saying.
Looking at April, we are at, we received a hundred and eleven thousand so far.
That's April. So we got April, May, June, two months. You think we won't get another hundred thousand dollars in?
Uh, and remember, these come in in quarters, so the next quarter will come in. Um. July, yes, and that will be for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars. Um. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I just wanna know if that's a realistic number, cuz right now, looking at the current numbers that you have, that doesn't seem like that's realistic. And um. Yeah, that's a hundred and eleven percent increase. So I think I may wanna look at that, wanna roll it back, be conservative with that, when I'd be more conservative, then I would be um. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. My question was concerning the administration's budget, but I think we skipped around to other things. Are we still at administration? Are we moving forward?
Yeah, so unless council objects, we could just go through. Administrative, legal, cable, media, just go one by one, just go through all of them. Is that fine with council?
Um, before we do that, I do have one other thing on the summary page. It's one other thing that I had highlighted, and it's on um, under special police grant. I think it's page sixteen.
Special police grant.
Proposed special police grant?
Public safety, no? Public first ruling, public work.
Three pages that you just, it should be on the, it should. I don't know.
It's it's on the same page?
I think that's it. Hold on, let me see.
Yeah, it is, special police grant.
Yeah, um. Scroll down a little bit more. It's, there's some salaries on here. I just wanted to know what those were. Or are they not? Keep on going. Right there, the one twenty eighty five. What is that? Is that for officers?
Um, yes, so the. The state, um, the SAP grant um, really provides some. Um, subsidy for salaries as well.
So that helps suffer the worries?
Yes, it does.
Hmm. Okay. So is that number included in the? Police detail? In their department also?
Yes, it is.
Hmm.
So we transfer the funds from here into, from, this is a special um, revenue section. So we transfer the funds from there. To the operating account. But only that amount we are allowed. Um.
All right.
To claim.
All right, thank you.
I have the same question, but, and I have a related question, but I'll save that to when we get to um. Section.
Okay, can we?
Is it, is it? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
It it's a little bit confusing having some salaries here. And pulled out from here. Um. Is there any way we can, I don't know, I guess we'll.
Um, I think. I think what you're saying is that can we pull? The salaries from here that is relating to the special revenue instead of having it in. Um, their operations, general operations.
Yeah, just so it's all in the same spot so that we can see the. The total effect. So if we're going to, for example, come here and use this two hundred and twenty thousand dollar police state grant. On salaries, then why can't we just show this as revenue um, in the police section?
Uh, I agree.
So that we, so we can see the totality of. The salaries in one place as opposed to divvy duck in other sections of the budget.
Yes. So what happened here, it's a way that I um, monitor what's going on with our grants.
Okay, I get it.
Hmm.
Councilman, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Okay, another uh, another thing, under camera photo enforcement? And scroll down, uh, Mr. President?
Look, I'm about to search.
No, those are in the specials, so you go down.
Oh.
Yes.
Where?
Down, special revenue.
Yeah, I'm looking at a maintenance agreement under expenditures, under ca- camera photo enforcement?
Um, go down, go down. This is it. Yeah, so go down some more, yeah.
Twenty six thousand one hundred and fourteen under the maintenance agreement. What is that? That's like a hundred and ninety five percent increase. What is that?
That will be the cost associated with um, our. I think that is a red speed. From their maintenance, but I have to look into this because it could have other um. Other maintenance agreement could be included in this.
Okay, cuz you let me know that.
Will do.
Um, I think that's. I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Oh. Let's see. Oh, under enterprise um, budget, um. That's scroll, that's a scroll down too. Right there. What is um? Special event fees? What are special event fees?
Okay, so special event was um, an initiative we wanted to put in place where the goal room itself. Can have um, income earning um, potentials. So um. The coordinator would plan some. Activities, some fundraising activities to us, to assist with the um. Goal room having some, some earnings, which is separate from rentals.
Okay, uh, I'll get into more detail on that later, but um. All right, okay, thank you. All right, done with most things. I'm ready. We can go to administration. Good now.
All right. Well, I don't know what this is, so I'll describe this, but um. All right, administration. Hmm. Do we have any?
Um. Mr. President?
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, we did a few adjustments in the um, the admin section as it relate to. The executive assistant and the um. The. Assistant city manager. So if you notice those two amounts, one is at forty thousand eight seventy four. And one at sixty three. So I've made some adjustments there to um, have what we're actually doing now. The ex- the executive assistant um, will be removed and the difference between what the. Assistant city manager's earning now and what we have there will be moved up to the assistant city manager's position. So there will be a a slight change. And that will give us a little savings.
Uh, Ms. President?
Yes, uh, that, uh, Ms., I saw Councilman Herring and Councilwoman Jones had her hand up first, so let me go there and then I'll come to you. Councilman Jones?
Okay, thank you, Council President. So you're saying that we're not gonna have an executive assistant? Is that what's being proposed?
Yes, that's what we're proposing, given uh, the shift in, in um, in the governance.
Okay, and then also I'm looking at um. Special events. For the administration? Have, have they vetted these events and decided that this is what they they wanna do? I mean, can the city manager enlighten me on these, these special events that there? Um, have been put into their budget?
Um, good evening, Councilwoman Jones. Thank you for the question. Um, so to say have we vetted them? I'm gonna say we've pretty much uh, recycled them in trying to stay consistent with what has been done in past, the years past.
I don't remember, community uh, welcome fall program. What is that? Holiday mental health there? I I get that, but. The the council also has cancer awareness day, so. Uh, multicultural day. Um. I I don't, I I have no, you said in the past, I I just don't remember those.
Yeah.
That's been done and included in the city. If if they were done in the city.
Yes, I I will get some clarity before you wanna, I'm sorry.
May Day, uh, summer wellness. I I just don't, I have no recollection of those events, so. Um. I I would like to, you know, what they consist of and what it is the administration is trying to give us against.
So if you don't mind, I could um. Clear a little of this up. Um. If you can remember, we usually have those programs like the. Um, the turkey giveaways, the events for the kids during the um. During the holiday months between November through December. Those are what we're actually trying to to capture. In this section.
Well, I think they should be identified as such because, um, look, let me speak up now, cuz. Uh, turkey giveaway is self-explanatory. Is that which, which one is that? Community welcome fall program or holiday mental health? Uh, multicultural day. What which, does turkey giveaway fall under one of those titles?
So we're looking at the community welcome fall programs. So that would be in the fall season.
Right. So community welcome fall program is turkey giveaway. I mean, I'm just kinda confused because in the, looking at the legislative budget for special events, everything is identified. And I understand what Glenn Arden Day consists of. I understand what cancer awareness consists of. I understand what the uh, Thanksgiving luncheon consists of, what what we do at those events and how, you know, it's identified for those things. But these events here, I I have no. I I just don't have any recollection of them or, you know. Or what they, you know, I mean, turkey giveaway would be self-explanatory. We're gonna give away turkeys, that'd be turkey giveaway. It would be community welcome fall program. What is that? So I I just want things, I I I believe that the thing, the event should be self-explanatory. So I, I just want things, I, I, I believe that the thing, the event should be self-explanatory and this is something that the administration is at, what, what it is the administration is actually doing. I have no problem with events, but let's be explicit with what we're doing here. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Harry?
Uh, I, I give it to uh Councilwoman Ferguson.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, um, I concur with Councilwoman Jones, because um this stuff is in there, I don't even know what it's about. Um and, and again, I don't remember us having any of these type of events and and Glan- and the city of Glanar and as it pertains to own the city's property. Um so I mean, I think they should be labeled as such. Um I mean, just like the, the event they have for the children, um, I think they're named to something else. Um where um the goal room coordinator was, you know, was helping with that. I mean, I, is that one of those events? Um, um where you did for the kids, uh, I think it's right before Christmas?
Yes, that would be a part of it.
Well, then needs to be, I mean, I, I agree with that because this is not saying anything to me. I don't, I, I, May Day, I don't even know what that is. Um, so that needs to be, I mean, you need to identify. But I want to go back up to um the position of the executive um assistant. Um so the executive assistant uh assistant position which was held by uh Jordan is vacant. And are you saying that if you're gonna do away with that position?
Given the current um government structure and the fact that we are um moving the executive department which will be going into council and we are now adding a city manager. We are considering to eliminate that position and um bring the amount at forty thousand up to what it should be for the assistant city manager. So this is where we would make some savings um by moving the amounts from the executive to the city manager.
Who would be supporting the uh this uh city manager and assistant city manager?
President Curtis, if I may?
Yeah.
So, so there are discussions to do some uh reconfiguring of staffing. Um, I think it would be wise, I, I provide either email or we discuss some of the staffing proposals potentially in a closed session, um, but we're looking at restructuring the administrative staff that we currently have uh to be able to utilize the support necessary, uh particularly for administration uh as well as a couple of other departments. Um but I can definitely provide further detail relative to that, but the thought process was to be able to absorb some of that salary. We knew that uh FY twenty five, we had budgeted a salary for six months for the assistant city manager position, uh and then trying to determine the logistics of the office structure with this new form of government. Uh, we have some suggestions relative to that to be able to provide that support as well as potentially provide some savings. Um, but we can get you some additional uh information uh relative to that, uh if that's okay.
Okay, well, just clearing for, for me. So I mean, it says it's vacant, but it's not being eliminated.
They, it, it's potentially be absorbed or uh zeroed out for this particular uh fiscal year budget for FY twenty six with some of the things that we have relative to restructuring uh some of the administrative uh staff. I, I hope that.
No, I mean, I mean, maybe I'm not grasping, but um I mean, it's one thing that to fill it for such a time. There's another thing to just eliminate the, the, um, just eliminate it and don't uh put a budget for um to be filled at this, at this time. Um, but I, I know, I'm, I'm not understanding. I mean, if we have to do a close meeting, because I mean, you're saying doing a, a, a closed meeting or do something in a later date, but I'm trying to understand what this budget is saying right now, because the budget has to go on, go on. And um, I mean, even if you're reconfiguring something or if you
I, I would say, just for clarity's sake, we would definitely uh for all intents and purposes, eliminate that particular position. And then there's a restructuring of staff to provide the necessary support for the city manager and assistant city manager.
Okay, I disagree with that.
Okay, um, just to piggyback off of Vice President Ferguson's la- uh earlier point of his clearance up and also it only adds up to sixteen thousand dollars, so what's the extra four thousand dollars for? Anybody?
Um, we will go back through this just to see exactly what is causing that difference.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilman Harry, did you?
Uh, yeah, could we just put this, what is the salary for the city man, for the assistant city manager? Just want to make sure we got that number right.
Welcome, Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, give me one moment, I'll pull up that exact amount.
The eighty one seven forty eight?
It's just, it is eighty one, no, it is eighty four thousand.
Eighty four? Do we only did six months? How did that, how did, how does forty, forty eight seven four plus forty eight seven four equal eighty four?
Uh, do we take it, like, out the uh pay scale? Uh, and so with the FY twenty six, we, we placed it upon what the pay scale has had stated, I think, the initial number wasn't accurate FY twenty five. Make sure I get the correct scale, because we did make sure it was placed on a proper grading scale. I just don't have that information right here in front of me, if you give me a moment.
Yeah, she's looking for that. Is there any other, Mr. Si- Miss uh Councilman Harry, do you have any other questions?
Um, no, my same concern was with the uh events line and um yeah, that was it.
Any other questions for the administrative budget? Why Mr. Simpson looks for that line item? Well, the engineering service, what, what is that?
Um, if I may, um, go back to the salaries, it's eighty four thousand and one for the assistant city manager.
Four hundred and one?
Thank you, uh, Dean.
And the um the additional amount, which I agree with Councilman Harry, the actuals for twenty four and where we are right currently with twenty five be helpful so we can see the, the need to go up from thirty two to fifty two. Because right now, actuals of twenty two and twenty three don't really support a big two thousand dollar budget. So it'll be helpful to see the actuals. So what's the, the rationale behind a twenty thousand dollar increase?
No, it's not a twenty thousand increase. What we're looking at is at forty thousand, I think it was eight forty, eight ninety. That was for six months.
What are you talking about? I'm talking about
Are you talking about the salaries?
No, I'm talking about the professional services for engineering, engineering services right here.
Okay. As much as possible, I think that has to do with the amount of um infrastructural, um, it changes that will be taking place. We're talking about the elevator, the um council chambers. Um all of those um capital infrastructure changes that we'll be having.
Well, I also think it'd be helpful to have a justification here, uh especially when it's going to be increasing. So I mean, you can understand this says eleven hundred, this says twelve hundred. Then we budgeted thirty two thousand, not thirty two thousand twenty five, and now we're going to fifty two thousand. So I mean, it'll be helpful for the council, it'll be helpful for me, um to see what that fifty two thousand is going to go towards and, and, and why there will be an increase. Councilman Harry, I see you're on mute. Did you have a question?
I did have a question, because I'm, I'm, I want to go back to the salary for the assistant city manager. You said it's eighty four thousand and one?
Eighty four thousand and one.
Okay, so where is that on the pay scale? Because I'm looking at this pay scale here and I don't see it on here. Under new hire, um yeah, I'm not seeing.
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to pull my pay scale, I apologize, I'm having some technical difficulties.
Yes, I'm looking too.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I was because that's management, um I don't see the eighty four thousand and one.
And they look Mayor Cross, do you have any justification for the professional service engineering growing up by twenty thousand dollars?
I do not. That is proposed obviously by the uh administration. Uh, my suspicion is not dealing with the elevator costs though, but maybe a renovation of some of the internal rooms uh to make them more efficient for the administrative changes that have happened with the government over.
Thank you. Uh, they continue to search the salary classification, Councilwoman Jones, do you have anything?
No, I was going down to another line item, so let's finish, let's finish with the uh getting the salary uh issue squared away, then we can go to the next line item. Thank you.
Oh. Perhaps the mayor could chime in with your question while they look for it? Uh, because this, I mean, this is the mayor's project, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. The line item I'm speaking of is election board. I'm seeing forty five hundred dollars in there for uh election board. What, what is that for? It says voting, salaries and advertising, but we're finished with the election.
We are, but we have talked about this before, uh, Councilwoman Jones, in that if there's ever um someone who uh resigns or if there's ever a change, then there needs to be a stand-up of the board of elections and they should not be working for free. Those uh board members, particularly president and other executive members of the board actually do receive a stipend. So that is just there in case that there is anything such as that, that happens. Uh, it allows for us to not have to try and find money to support that. Um, we have taken it out in the past, but you know, each year we make the recommendation uh to make sure that we don't get ourselves caught or hemmed in such a way. Uh, but this will force us to readily advertise and get things moving without starting from zero. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Simpson and Mr. Stewart, if you cannot find that, can you just get an answer to Mr. to Councilman Harry, please, uh, so we can move forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, because it's important that we stick to this pay scale that we paid a lot of money for. So.
Sure.
All right.
So, yeah, that'll still be in red and we can follow up. Any other comments on the administrative budget?
I'm sorry, Council President, that information will be sent to the entire council, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But we also have to look into this fifty two thousand dollars. So just to follow up on Councilwoman Jones, this is not for a special election. And you're on mute, Mr. Simpson?
Sorry, President.
Yeah. So this is not for a special election. So I don't I mean, it's a small number, but everything counts. There, there have been no, no one has contested the election, though there's um you know, Mayor Cross.
No, this is not for a special election, but in case, uh, we have always made each budget year a proposal just to put something in that fund. Uh, in case you do have a resignation, I mean, we're all living this life uh for one journey home. But at the end of the day, um, there was never anything in there, and so then you would have to, you know, have quick meetings to try and stand folks up. At this point, we keep something there uh that hopes and holds in case something unique happens. And we have to do an immediate, you know, call out for support or advertise for upcoming elections and things like that, because it doesn't actually have, we can't wait on that, so we have to advertise those things, just like we had a discussion today about the budget. So uh, that's what it is, just uh four thousand dollars for uh in case. And if we want, like I said in previous years, it's been cut, uh, but each year we make the recommendation just in case.
Thank you. Anything else for moving forward? No? All right. Legal budget? I think so.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, what is, what is the justification for cutting it by ten thousand dollars?
That's not, this is zero.
Oh, well, what is the justification for leaving it at fifty? Yeah, they need to fix those nines, that's throwing everything off.
Yes, um, it's, it, it was a sub provision.
Yeah, so I guess looking at everything, we're looking at all these capital projects that we have, um looking at the fact that we may um probably gonna need, I don't know, we're gonna need legal for probably gonna need, I don't know, we're gonna need legal for some of these projects that we have for the uh police department or some other things. And we're using, and, and also with this situation on Glen Arden Parkway with this house. Uh we don't know how deep that's gonna go. Um also looking at the fact that, you know, we don't know, still gotta look at learner, learner corporation, maybe trying to annex that into the city. So should we leave it at fifty? I mean, how much did we spend? Ah see, that's why we need extras on here. How much have we spent so far to date in legal?
I'm looking for that number. Um through April, we have done forty-five thousand and eighty-five.
Forty-five thousand?
Yes.
We're gonna probably hit fifty easy. I think, I still think that should go back up to sixty like it's historically have been um. Because we're gonna hit fifty, I, we probably hit fifty just with um, you know, we got this court case coming up, so that's gonna run well into, probably run into fifty thousand and over.
Okay.
So I think, I think we may pick that up, but you know, I mean, that's a consensus at a council.
Any opposition to just leaving at the twenty-four level or sixty? Herron, are you comfortable at sixty? Vice President Ferguson?
Um. Uh, I would say more than that really, but. Sixty-five or seventy. Because we don't know what we're gonna um. I, I think we have a lot pending. A possible pending. But definitely not fifty thousand.
Yeah, any opposition to seventy? Okay. We keep it there. Cable budget?
Um, we said seventy, right?
Seventy, yes.
Okay.
Alright. Let me fix this.
Oh, I do have pressure on the cable budget. Um, why is telephone, why is communications going up to seventeen thousand dollars versus zero in twenty-twenty-five?
Hold a second. Make careful.
Maybe something wrong with this line. I have a song in my mind, Mr. Telephone Man. Something wrong with my line. You're making my line. You're gonna click every time.
So seventeen thousand, um what has been happening that, that fees that we pay to INET has been going up um over the years. So it is mainly what we are paying to INET.
Okay. You may want to put that in a, um in your description, in your details.
Will do.
Hmm, alright, thank you.
Um. I would say the same with this. I had a question. Again, the actuals will actually help. Um. Because we have zero in twenty-twenty-two, thirteen hundred in twenty-twenty-three. And then we have these large amounts here. There's really no justification for it if we don't have actuals there. So please put those in.
Okay. Media.
I'm sure that you. So. This is right. It's big. Any questions related to um media and communications?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Um. So. I'm trying to. So um. What is the uh, so is everybody getting what, a cost of three point five, cost eleven increases across the board?
Yes, there will be a three percent increase. Hold on.
Three percent or three point five? Three percent?
It should only be three percent.
Is that consistent with the salary classification?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um what I could tell you about this is that in the budget for twenty-twenty-five, we had the wrong amount for the web um the, the communication specialist. It should have been seventy, uh let me see. Seven, three, two, one. Should have been seventy-one thousand and eighty-eight. So the budget itself had the wrong amount.
So the FY twenty-five budget had the wrong amount?
Yes, which we have done the correction, yes.
So what was approved? Was sixty-eight approved or was it?
It was a seven-one oh eighty-eight.
And was that approved by? I mean, was it approved in approved budget? And if it was approved in approved budget, why does the number here say sixty-eight?
Um that was a, a change that happened. I don't know, it was an error that we didn't um resolve earlier.
So. Paid or seventy-one, even though the budget approved only sixty-eight?
I, I um may have to pass this on to our HR specialist when she comes back to the next meeting.
Yeah, because I'd like to know how that happened, because if we approve sixty-eight, that's all supposed to have been paid with sixty-eight. And if there's paid any more than that, then we, well, I have a problem. Alright. Well, wait till she come in and say, alright, thank you. Um. So I'm at, for, for, so basically, and I'm assuming this is what you're doing with the um professional services. You're taking that down by twenty-four thousand and taking it up top for a web media assistant?
Exactly, yes.
And do we have a job description for that person?
A job description was done.
Is it, do we have it? The council have it?
Um, I would have to speak with the HR specialist on this again.
Because when we have these new positions, you, the, the, the council has to approve our job descriptions per the personnel menu. So that should come to us so we can review it. So if y'all can get that, that'd be great.
Well, for sure. Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, going to code enforcement. I have some questions. You're right. I'll just leave it at this. Any questions? Are we fully staffed? I, I take it we're not fully staffed? Correct? A, a, in code enforcement?
Good, good evening. Uh no, we still have one vacant full-time position, but we're actively um uh, uh, uh advertising for.
So, yeah, and we need a part-time?
Correct, a part-time person started on April the twenty-eighth.
Started already on April twenty-eighth?
Correct.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then move on to the legislative. Right, um. And this includes seven members, right, which, which Stewart?
I think that is a seven at eighty-four, so at eighty-four.
Yeah.
So it should be fifty-eight, eight hundred. Now remember, this budget that you're looking at actually has the executive department still in effect, but the adjustment that I've done was to increase that while moving the executive department.
Then what is this? Oh, oh, sorry, Councilor, sorry. That's Councilwoman Jones, did you have a question? Councilwoman Jones?
Well, I'm sorry, you know, I had a question about part of the budget too. Did he ever take delivery on the, the vehicle that we uh voted on in March?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up. What did you say?
I'm sorry, um for Mr. Green, we do, were we, was the city ever able to take delivery on the vehicle that the council approved in March?
Um, good evening, uh Councilwoman Jones, thanks for the question. Uh no, not yet. We, uh, we just acquired all of the signatures that was needed uh to send to the uh, the dealership. But everything uh has been submitted and um uh the vehicle uh uh will be shipped to us soon.
Thank you.
Councilman Herron?
Yeah, for the um legislative budget, why did they cut out thirty-six thousand dollars out of uh special events? And why is um Thanksgiving luncheon not part of that?
Okay, I have a buddy, Mayor Cross, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Stewart?
Uh this won't, I believe that the council would give us some guidance as to what um events they want to include this year for this fiscal year.
Everything's there except for I think uh Thanksgiving luncheon isn't there. Um. That needs to be added in.
Okay, let me note this.
I think that's um. What was it? I, I know you had a list of.
Yes. I have a list. I have a list, um let me see if I could go to it.
Oh, here it is right here, um. Thanksgiving came up to, we budgeted ten, came up to twelve. I would say do thirteen. I'm still gonna try to get um again, but the project grants. If we can get in front of uh project grants from the county, we can get them to cover the cost of it, but we need a budget for it in case they don't.
Did we get that grant this year?
Yeah, we got a hundred thousand dollars. So we paid for Glenn Arden Day, the Christmas party, Thanksgiving luncheon, cancer awareness. And the remaining, they're doing the Glen Arden Community Garden Day.
So you say, how much was that for that Thanksgiving?
Thirteen thousand.
Okay, so that only takes it up to one fifteen?
That's good for me.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, and I'd like to make a correction on um the um, the line for awards and grants to the youth clubs. It's Boys and Girls Club, and it should be Glen Arden Track Club, not Athletic Club.
Will do.
Thank you.
Uh, my question was on office supplies. Uh, I know we cut it, but you know, doesn't look like that thirteen hundred dollar level is sufficient. So at at the very least, we should be at the the bottom tier of our actuals that we have posted. Uh, but we'll have more information once we have twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, data there.
Yes.
The track club, um, it it went back to athletic.
Yeah, it was still just gonna take care of it. Yeah, this is just for our edification, it's fine. Uh, there's something else here. This is for conferences and training, um. Again, it would be good to see, I don't know if it's if we should be bringing this down because we have, gonna be having a new council this coming fiscal year. Um, and I I highly doubt that eleven thousand five hundred is gonna be sufficient. Councilman Harrison?
Um, well, you made the adjustment for the Thanksgiving, the when, um, the Thanksgiving event, you had up the price in the detail section, could you write it in there as well? You know how it says breast cancer awareness and everything, could you put that in there as well?
Yes, I'll be doing that.
You can just say luncheon with it if we just wanna be specific, in case somebody just say that's Thanksgiving and you know, do anything with it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just keeping this at thirty-five thousand for at least the initial year. Councilman Harry?
What's that?
Uh, I saw you unmute, uh, unmuted, so I figured you had a comment, but it's the, for the conference and trainers, going down from, uh, thirty-five thousand to eleven thousand, and with this being the, will be the, um, first year of a brand-new council, I'm not sure that eleven thousand is gonna be enough.
I don't think so either.
So keeping this same level. Any other questions?
Um, I do, um. And the, um, dues, um, the membership. Um, so these are the conferences. Should anything be in there for mayors? Uh, association or something on, or is that on somewhere else?
No, I think you have a good point. I don't know what's currently in the, I mean, the Maryland Mayor Association?
I don't, I was just wondering, should anything be in there, um? I don't know which.
You probably should have something in there. I mean, you guys might represent the mayor's position, and there will be events that they need to go to that they probably will be invited to.
Oh, I just don't know which ones, yeah.
Um, Mayor, Mayor Cross?
Yeah, that product that she's requesting is already caps it under the executive branch. So if you go to the executive page, then you'll see all of those particular, uh, functions as well as dues already outlined.
Yeah, so now that there's no executive office, uh, as council members, what do you want to carry over? There's the Black Mayors for a hundred, National Council of Mayors for nine hundred, ICMA for two hundred, PG CMA for five hundred fifty-two, Maryland Mayors Association for five hundred.
M- MML, you know, yeah, no, um, I don't think you need to have all of those conferences and, um, maybe one, or I don't know.
Are we al- already a part of the PG CMA?
Yeah, and MML, um. I don't know about the National League Cities, I don't think we normally do that, uh, but I mean, that, I mean, whatever they decide. Maryland Mayors Association, other black mayors. That's the council mayors, ICMA.
Um, maybe the Maryland Mayors Association?
Okay.
Any other, any other suggestions from council? You said one or two?
What are the conferences, um? Can't see with that page.
Yeah, hold on, let me switch it.
I guess if you have a membership, whatever membership you have, I guess they probably have conferences, I don't know. Cause I see Maryland Black Mayors, Inc. Maryland Mayors Association have a spring, or they they have, uh, conferences, so. I guess once you join a membership, I guess they'll, you'll get information on what what type of conferences they have, but I just just need to put a dollar amount in there.
Wouldn't that be covered under the, you know, the seventy-five hundred dollars that people get? That each council member will get? Or no?
I I I believe that this is gonna have to be studied because
I mean, it still should be listed, nothing.
You know, you should have, you should have it listed, but it's still, once, once the 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 position of mayor is is, uh, fulfilled, that person should, uh, do some type of study on these different organizations to find out what organization is really feasible for the city of Glen Arden and their mayor. You know, I can see the Maryland Ma- the the Maryland Mayor's Association, maybe the Maryland Black Mayors Association, but but some of this other stuff to me looks, uh, redundant.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Right, so those two.
I'm not sure, but the MML opening legislation reception is?
National League of Cities Conference? Is that necessary?
Then you would have to join the, um, I mean, you would have to get a membership probably, um, Maryland. And I think that's eleven, that eleven, twelve hundred is just, is, uh, including, I think, all of the conferences, so, I mean, I don't know what my question, but I don't seventeen hundred, and that's seventeen?
Yeah, it's around up to eighteen. Mayor Cross?
So you don't need the National League of Cities if you don't wanna be a vote member at the national level, because MML actually, um, does cover the cost for just attendance uh, to the local conference that happens here in DC. Um, the PG CMA is a one that I would highly recommend because that is your regional representation there in Annapolis, as well as on the Maryland Municipal League. Maryland Municipal League, obviously with Legit is our insurance carrier, so if you're out of the league, then you're gonna have to find insurance. The Maryland Black Mayors and the Maryland Mayors Association. Maryland Mayors Association is part of the If Our Mayor Project, which is a governor project as well, that encourages the youth in fourth grade to actually participate in government. And the other piece, uh, Maryland Black Mayors is just a representation as a city that's over sixty percent African-American. Uh, it actually then continues to contend with some of the, uh, rightsizing of policy uh, to support communities of ethnic change. Uh, when you look at the, um, mileage reimbursements, those are per diems, they should not be negated because, uh, that's what we have. It's your allowances before you go, and it's also if you're traveling with your own car, then that supports you getting there. The mayor's, uh, representation is critical in the state of Maryland, uh, as twen- one of twenty-seven municipalities in Prince George's County. Our voice cannot be negated, uh, so this is, uh, Glen Arden has always held a a very strong seat in all of these, uh, programs. Maryland, uh, Black Mayors, Maryland Municipal League, Maryland Mayors Association as well, uh, for the fall and the summer conferences of each of the Maryland Mayors Association and the Maryland, uh, Municipal League. Now, uh, there are some other fees that's probably gonna increase uh, based on the fact that, um, we're not gonna be able to, and either of those organizations have a lobbyist, so there has been some streamlining happening in the Maryland Municipal League. So you really want whoever is gonna be in that executive seat to not be blind. Thank you.
So seeing under the legislative side, uh, because the dues that we pay are for the, the entire elected body for the the city of Glen Arden, not just for the mayor and then for the council. Under PG CMA and MML.
Any other things that should be transferred over? From the executive budget to the council budget? Two dues, two conferences. I think that is it. Discussion funds. Questionary rooms. Oh, maybe you said not mailers.
Hello, Mr. Curtis, I have that. I'll make the adjustments there.
Okay, so we have mailers here and then discretionary funds here?
Right.
Okay, yeah, we can separate those, that'll be great.
Yes.
All right, then no more questions, we'll move on to finance department? Do you have assistance staff? Any questions here? I did have one, um, as relates to temporary staffing. Um, if you're fully staffed, why do you need temporary staffing? Anyone?
Um, this is if we have any special, um, assignments that is going on, and this could be while staff is on vacation or so on. Just to fill in.
But that would assume that that person's on vacation for quite some time.
Pardon me?
I would assume that staff will be on vacation for quite some time. If there's a a project, first you gotta get the person on board, get them up to speed on what the project is. By the time that person gets up to speed, wouldn't that, that person, whoever the staff member is, will they should be back? So the question is, do you why do we need need fourteen thousand dollars for temporary staffing? And if there was something that happened, um, then that, the temporary staff funds well, that's not true. But this still is, I mean, justification for fourteen thousand dollars temporary staffing for fully-staffed accounting team.
Could we go back to what it was last year?
At the very least.
The budget. But I can tell you that actual was higher because, um, remember, we weren't fully staffed, so, yeah.
Any other questions from council members here? All right, with this executive budget, most of this can come out.
Um, excuse, Council President?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, maybe I might forgot, I mean, overlooked it, but, um, um, when purchasing like, um, shirts and, um, like the pens or whatever, is that under, come on the, um, what line of the commando, is it a special category? For that, for the, um, and like business cards and stuff like that for the, uh, legislation branch?
It's supplies.
Supplies?
Yes.
What, office supplies?
For, um.
Like, we have, you know, you know, incoming, uh, council members that needs, you know, council shirts, um, new cards, business cards that say, you know, council, um, probably maybe lapel pens and things like that, where where does that come, I mean, what line item does that come out of?
Yes, it will come from supplies.
The the line that you guys reduce?
Yes.
But but put it back up right there. I don't understand why you reduced it. And, and you need to put, um, I guess for the record, just put more than just um, supplies and posters, I mean, it could be uh, business cards, I mean, you can be more specific.
This is crazy, it's getting a lot. This is just two lessons, right? What'd you say, shirts?
Yeah, like the uh, business shirt that we have polo shirts, you have long, you know, you have the dress shirt or whatever, you wanna call it, um, I, I think we um, we have been talking about for uh, quite a few um, years getting a, a jacket, like when we in the winter time out there with uh, shred day or having out turkeys and things like that, um. I mean, just like the police officers have a jacket, but we can just put, that, that'll be something to discuss, but um, I don't, seven thousand, um, Councilman Harry, when you, uh, we all buy t-shirts, is that covered out of the, the budget of the event or do?
Yeah, we usually do it out the budget of the event.
Okay. I don't know whether that's enough money or not, is that seven thousand? Yeah.
I don't know, now you're getting jackets, I don't think so.
Jackets?
Yeah, we're gonna get some jackets and hoodies.
Now, I mean, we've been talking about that since, I mean, this the two thousand eighteen, but I mean, like a lot of times it's just cold out there, you know, when we outside and in the rain, like we got rained on the other day. But um, I mean, it needs to be, but I mean, we may not get it, you know, in that, but like it would have, you know, couns- you know, the council and the, and logo on there. Like the police identifies their stuff.
There, I put it to the what, twenty twenty-three level, where we spent nine thousand dollars basically. Fair enough? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, and are we still getting the, the file cabinet and chairs?
We got the chairs this year. Um, when I did that, I am thinking that we wouldn't have got it, gotten it until next year, so we're, we're halfway there.
Very cool, so let's, where we put it? Take this down, two thousand? I don't know if we still need file cabinets, I know we need to, something.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Vice President Ferguson?
I don't see. Mr. Stewart, um, I know, um, you might can help with the, the uh, purchase of paper, do you think, um, with our supply, that's, that's good enough, I know we use a lot of paper, um.
So what I've done, so what I've done is um, is I buy paper for the, for the office, for the, you know, all departments and then distribute it accordingly to their respective departments, um. I, I think what you have is, is, should be reasonable.
Okay.
Let me see. Supplies. So I had five thousand for supplies last year. And um, you threw to April, you have you six hundred forty.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Councilman Harry.
I was on legislator, legislation, so we, I, I am noticing, maybe the clerk can chime in on here. Then maybe we need to get some like, some plastic totes, cause we have a lot of stuff in there that really needs to be packed up and probably sent downstairs, but we need some probably plastic toast to put them in. So I'm, 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 uh, is the clerk on tonight?
Yeah, she's here. Plastic toast though? That, 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 don't they tear easily or get poked?
The plastic, the toast, tote, plastic containers, you know, with the lids to snap on?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll see about something else.
I'm talking about the, 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 like the toast you get, you know, you put stuff in.
Yeah, yeah, I got what you're saying, um.
Um, yeah, Mr. Aaron, could we get those this year?
Yeah, we need them, we need to get that stuff out of there. Uh, we got, we got a budget, yeah. Cause I'm looking at right now, we didn't spend much of anything in supplies, did we?
Yes, so I would recommend we try getting this before the year end.
Yeah, that'll work, so we can just need a budget like it is.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
That works, we can, Madam Clark, we could get that ordered, um, now, really.
Okay, how many do you think we should, um, we should need?
Uh, it depends on you, depends on um, your assessment of
Okay.
Uh, the work that needs to be done.
Okay.
Alright. Think we've been to finance, there were no questions. The executive budget, we moved some stuff over. But with that, the rest of us, items that are in here, promotional pins and attachment, um, unless council members think that we still need that. Support equipment. Think that will be able absorbed, who said, uh, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I'm sorry, since this is the first year of this uh, new, new uh, government, uh, we, we can kinda get a feel. And then by next year's budget, we should know whether we need uh, all of these uh, promotional pins and pencils and that type of thing.
The police.
I'm sorry, so that the uh, executive budget is gone?
If we agree that it's gone, I mean, other things were like, so are, I, I'm sorry, ma'am, I misunderstood you, did you mean transfer this fourteen hundred to the legislative budget?
Whatever's left, yes, because there's, uh, uh, from the, I'm, I'm only one person, but from what I see, there's gonna be no more executive. Uh, it's gonna be um, absorbed into the legislative budget because that's uh, the way the government is set up now.
So you're saying that we should take these items and add it to the legislative budget?
I don't agree with that.
Well, the money, but not the
I mean,
yeah, we wouldn't need all of, because we already have a telephone budget.
Yeah, so let's say.
It's not like we're picking up an additional person.
No. We don't have, we don't have additional person.
Right.
So for, for this item, we've transferred two conferences, so we can zero this out. But this one we've transferred to memberships. Let's zero this out. For promotional pins, do we wanna transfer any of these promotional items to the legislative budget?
No.
Okay.
I mean.
Support equipment, uh, so we probably, we have what, two new council members, I think. Uh, Mayor Cross already has a laptop, if I'm not mistaken, she can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, do we have anything in here for a laptop?
Supplies. Let's see, office supplies, office supplies.
Uh, nope. So, yeah, Mr. Stewart, laptops are about fourteen hundred dollars?
Approximately around fourteen hundred.
Do we have any equipment being returned?
I'm sorry, I said it again?
I said we may have some, well, I said do, but we may have some, uh, equipment being returned as well, devices.
Oh, yeah, that is right. Can we wipe what's been returned and reuse that instead of buying a new?
I mean, you can, I, I, that's the, the one I have now was done that way.
Write it down. Alright, so we don't need this laptop. We don't need the telephone. I don't know what miscellaneous office expenses are, so I'm, I'm assuming this is safe to take out as well. Um, and we already have three hundred dollars in for each council member in a legislative budget, so I'm guessing that can go too. And again, this is gone, this is gone. Alright. For the police. So again, this is the confusing part. So if we have salaries here and this is the totality of salaries, then how are salaries also in the other section that we were talking about earlier with the police grant?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that I would move those amounts that relate to the grant. But here's, here's where we have, um, where it becomes a little difficult to handle. These are salaries I'm taking. This is direct salary, these are each position's salary. For the special revenue, it's a portion that they are, um, they are subsidizing. How should I do that? Should I be having the list of officers? Then deduct the amount that we would, the subsidy that we're getting? Would that be the best way to go about this?
You talking about, uh, as it relates to the police grant absorbing these salaries?
Right, it will absorb portions of it.
Yeah, what, what I would, I mean, what I would do is, I would budget it, the, you know, I would put the subsidizing revenue in here, in this budget, so that I don't have to try to parse out some of the salary and put it over there, we don't even know who's gonna be on that grant. So how do you know how much money is gonna be on that, uh, grant? It depends on the officer, sergeant, captain, whoever, and their hours. So I will put the revenue here, um, because likely the grant is also gonna cover some of these things down here too, uh, soon.
Yes.
A- and that's different from your grant report. Your grant report, you can type up in the, you know, standard compliant form that you have to report it in, but for budgeting purposes, I will put it here.
Okay, so for most of those department, that does not have revenues on this section, it's in the summary side of the um, the general fund, so if you go to the summary, you will see where it is going to be substituted by the revenue going there.
That's great, so how do you prevent this from being double counted? How do I know that this one point eight million?
Will not be considered again in um, general, in general operations.
Yeah. Right now, I don't see the links where, where, I just trying to get an accurate bottom dollar, right? So I mean, you know, Trevor, you can, but you have to just make sure your links are, I mean, they should probably tie really well. Um, but then you still have that question, if all the salaries are here, how are they also parsed out? In the
Special revenue.
Special revenue. Because if you're, if all these expense line items add up.
So if you scroll up, you'll see where the um, no, scroll down and you'll see the intergovernment. So the sub grant of twenty-two territories in general, so it's transferred from the special revenue to there. So that I need to um, work on separately.
Public safety, so you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
This, this has salary of one point eight million dollars. The police has one point eight million dollars.
Okay.
But if we move down to
Special revenue.
Special.
Yes. So go down. So this is special revenue, the two twenty, this.
Yeah, I have one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, so that means I'm overstating the salaries for police, right?
If you're looking at the general fund and general operation and special revenues together.
That means I automatically
Negate the other, but that's a technicality that um, we could discuss. And how to hold that.
But what I'm saying is that I automatically, that we automatically save one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, cause that's already accounted for in the police department budget. Right?
Yes.
So that five hundred So that five hundred thousand in surplus that we needed, we don't need that much. If we don't need that much. Who's that? Oh, okay, alright. Uh, police, any, I'm sorry, don't mean to hog the mic. Any other council members have anything for the police department? Training. Um. Special events. So, uh, my only other, um, comment is just to tag line items with an amount. Um, so that we can see that the twenty-five thousand dollars is justified. I'm assuming that, uh, this has to do with. A large portion of this has to do with the father-daughter dance. I don't know if the chief is still on, chief.
Yeah, chief is here.
So the items that we have is in national light out, drunk or treat, harvest. Um, Santa with a badge, dadded out a dance.
Okay, okay, and that's fine. All I'm saying is just put, you see, you have like hop state rewind two point five. Um, just do the same, because it's consistent with all the other departments and having something allocated to an event.
Yes.
Okay.
Nah, it's, it's fine if you, you know, go under some and then we'll transfer it to the next event, but we just want an idea of what is this twenty-five thousand dollars represented?
Okay.
Um, and also for the police trial board, again, this is where twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five will come in handy, because we don't have any expenses. In these two years, so we don't have anything really to compare to. So do you know how much we've spent? I know that there was a police trial board this year for a particular incident. Um, but do you know how much we have spent thus far, Mr. Stewart, in this line item?
Um, give me one minute, um, let me see.
While he's trying to locate that, um, I'm looking at conference and training, um. I saw I lost twenty-nine percent there. I got, I, I have an issue with that, um. Every other year, we do mental health assessments, um, we just bought new rifles. And I've got two, uh, my captain lieutenant just got promoted, so both, all these categories, um, we're going to need training for and funding. So, um, I, I, I'm pretty sure I'm going to need more than eighteen thousand for conference and training.
So you want to keep it at the same level as last year?
Uh, yes, that, that'd be, that'd help, yeah.
Any comments, questions?
Um, something else I don't see on it either, um, maybe, um, the treasurer can help us out with this. Uh, I don't see anything on here for overtime. I don't know session that'd be in.
That's right here.
What, what page is that? What was that?
Right, do you see it? It's on the same page.
Okay, got you, got you, oh. Okay.
So for the trial board, um. I'm seeing one thousand nine fifty-eight spent through to April.
Oh, especially.
Seven, seven, nine, fifty.
So, so it's a safe, we can at the very least bring this down to ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Um, the other question I had on this budget was for gas. Uh, we had a hundred thirty-seven thousand in one year, a hundred forty-one thousand. I, I don't have the actuals. So.
Okay.
I don't think that's reasonable for us to go from these amounts to fifty-two thousand dollars.
So, Mr. Curtis?
Yep.
Through April, we have forty, forty-eight thousand.
Oh, no, well. Good information enough? Through April, we have forty-eight thousand dollars.
So maybe fifty, maybe sixty?
Police supplies look fine. Alright, council members, are any other questions?
Um, Mr. Curtis, I just did a little analysis for the police with regard to, um. Gas, fuel, and I think maybe eighty might be a reasonable number. Because I have an average of, let's say, three hundred dollars per officer per month. We have twenty-two officers. At three hundred times twelve, so eighty would be a reasonable figure to just make sure that we are covered.
That's that, fully staffed?
That's, that's fully staffed.
Okay. Uh, councilman, I'm sorry, I heard somebody, I don't know if it was Councilman Herring or Vice President Ferguson.
Um, I guess, I, I mean, you see, I should have, yeah, it shouldn't have woke me up, but, um, now I'm, I gotta ask some questions, um. That, that, so we're gonna go up to eighty thousand dollars, we only spent forty thousand dollars this year, forty-eight thousand dollars this year, we're gonna go up to eighty thousand dollars?
That, that count, that accounts for being fully staffed, because we're here right now, they're not fully staffed, so. It is really, uh, fifty-eight thousand dollars at the current staff level. Uh, and so Mr. Stewart just did analysis at a, uh, uh, being fully staffed, and that's how it came up with the eighty thousand.
Okay, so you're, and I heard him say, he, he's allocating three thousand dollars per officer in gasoline.
Mr. Stewart, did you say that?
Same. It's, it's, it's three hundred per officer per month.
Three hundred, so thirty.
It's a reasonable, yeah.
Hundred dollars a year per officer for. In gasoline. Okay. Three thousand dollars in gasoline a month, okay. So I think we, I mean, we really do need to look at. And that, that, and that's just not including gas dri- being driven for the city of Glen Arden. That's just gas in general, wherever they drive.
It's, it's on, um, on patrol, I believe.
You know, they drive a car in other places too, so you're averaging, if you can average now on what they're spending, they're obviously, they, they don't just drive the vehicles. In the city of Glen Arden, you know, I mean, I know vehicles are other places, they use them for part-time work or whatever else to use and drive for, so I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, again. Um, we're paying for gasoline for other things outside the city of Glen Arden. So, and I also, I, I, and I see that you went up on overtime, ten thousand dollars?
Yes, and I believe that they're going to be getting a grant that will help with some of that, but until I see it, um, I don't want to put it in the budget.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Five thousand.
I guess, I, I guess my concern is again with the overtime is that I'm just. I don't see how we're using so much overtime, especially when the previous chief, we, I think he did five thousand dollars maybe in his eight years in overtime. Um, and how can we do, what are we, I mean, we're doing so much overtime, I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're doing so much overtime, um. Yeah, I just don't, I don't see it, I just.
But, I'm staring. Some of this could be a result of them not having adequate enough staff. They're understaffed, so they have to be subsidizing and helping out where they can.
Because back then, when Chief O'Donnell was in office, and, um, he barely used any overtime at all, at all. Anybody look at the finances back, we have barely used any overtime.
But now it's like. So was he fully staffed?
He was fully staffed. Because I know, you know, I know, he, he, we had like, what, sixteen, seventeen officers, he was fully staffed. I'm just saying, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at that, I just think. You know, I just, I'm just curious about the overtime going up another five thousand dollars, and then it's, it's completely depleted by the end of the year. Um, when I. Chief O'Donnell was here, and he had a twenty thousand dollar budget of overtime, he never went over, he never even got close to twenty. I think it mostly spent was like five or six. But, um, and that's his time, his time here, but I'm, I'm just curious about that overtime, because I think overtime.
I can answer that, chief, I can answer that, um, Chief Bryant here, um. So overtime, so when officers, when officers go to court, when they off, they get paid overtime, they don't get comp time. Um, with short staff, we ran out of overtime this year, so by us being short, I was making officers work, um, comp time after we ran out of overtime. You know, so they're working mandatory comp time after we ran out of overtime, um. So, um, and we have more officers, more call for service, more court time. Um, so that, that, all that contributes to overtime, um, so it's a different time now and more officers. And with court time, every time they go to court, they have to, they get paid overtime, it's not comp time. And as of late, since we've been short, um, I haven't been paying officers, because we don't have overtime, we're paying them comp time, which is supposed to be, um. Overtime after a certain amount of time, which they're supposed to choose, but I've been making them use comp time after we ran out of overtime, we still be using comp time. Um, a lot of things I've been doing, especially for holidays and stuff, um, changing, um. My overlap day to compensate with over, um, with holidays and so forth, so it's not like we intentionally using overtime. Um, my first year here, I think we cut overtime by five thousand dollars. Um, but since I lost so many officers, you know, after supplement replace, have officers come in on days off and stuff, so. Definitely, that's a contributing factors to overtime.
Council President.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions, um, so, uh, uh, Chief Bryant. Bryant, so are you saying that when, when the, uh, officers have to go, go to court, they do, uh, the court dates never fall on their. Roughly scheduled day of work?
Um, sometimes it does, sometimes it don't. If the officers work nighttime, um, court, they gotta go to court during the daytime, so. It, it all depends. So now, if the officer's working day work and they got caught, that's their tour of duty. But I'm saying, so.
So they don't get overtime, because you were saying when they go to court, they have to get overtime, so you're saying only those that.
Right, so what I'm saying is, compared to comp time, sometime you can pick between comp time and overtime for the officers. But if they got to go, if they have to go to court and they're not working that particular tour, it's overtime. So if they, if they're working and they assign, and if they're on their day off or whatever, it's comp time, I mean, it's all overtime, so. If you're working in the city, like if I have them come into work, they can choose comp time or overtime. Um, and sometimes, um, in the situation now, because we don't have any more overtime, I got, I have them working comp time, but for court purposes. Um, if they're not working, it's overtime.
Okay, and I'd just like to add, um, piggyback off of, um, Councilman Herring.
Hmm.
Um, the first time we used any large sum of, uh, uh, amount of money for overtime was when Captain Jackson was. Asked him, and I, he now only used the whole twenty thousand, but he went over. It's in, in either six months or less. Um, we always were fully staffed with Oba, I mean, um, O'Donnell. And I mean, I, and I did get a, uh, history, um, once that happened with the overtime going over and above. I think I got three years or four years, and the most that was spent in overtime. I don't think it was quite five thousand dollars. Um, and. Just keeping it real, the, 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 you know, the, um, city was fully covered, you could see the officers. And I mean, it was what it was, so I mean, I personally don't think it should be. Thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand, it should be twenty thousand. They take comp time or they do whatever, but I think it's just excessive, um. Because it, it, and it's not about the, the time of the day, you know, time is, is different. I, you know, I just can't believe that, you know, you spend so much money in overtime, and I mean, I don't even know where they be. I don't see them, and I don't think that, you know, they can come time, or, you know, when they go to court. Um, and use the overtime when there's, when there's an emergency, um, going to court is, is part of your job. That's the way I see it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Um, any other comments? Any other adjustments?
I do have one other thing. I, I think, um, three hundred dollars, um, I mean, that, I have an issue with the, with the, um. With the gas also being a, a, the sign, uh, you know, the checks. Um, I've seen that, uh, the, the, um. Gas bill has come down substantially since they've had the GPSes on, um, uh, uh, GP, uh, had them on there, um. Which, I, I, you know, I was almost hoping that they didn't come down, because that would show that they was using the, the vehicles or, um, the way they should. But, um, they have come down substantial, a substantial amount, and so, um. I just think that gas bill is extremely too, you know, was extremely high, um, it has gone down some, but, um. Uh, three hundred dollars or thirty-six hundred dollars a year for. Gas, to me is a lot. Thank you.
Probably works. So one question, let me switch to you. Question I had was on the snow removal. Just didn't know if it was smart for us to go down so far when in, I mean. Twenty-two, we had forty thousand, don't know what we had in twenty twenty-four. But why did we go down twenty-two thousand for snow removal?
Well, President Curtis, um, so I believe year-to-date with snow removal, um, when we did the budget was, was approximately that amount. Uh, I think this, this is very relative, I mean, we can, we can put forty thousand in.
we can put forty thousand in, enough in ten, we could put ten and it could be sixty. Uh, I think that, that number can, is gonna fluctuate based upon the, the actual weather events that we have. So I'm, I'm open to wherever you would like to put that, I think we were just working to be conservative based upon what we saw on FY twenty-five so far.
No, that's, that's fine, if you guys think that's eighteen, it's eighteen. At least for me.
Um, Mr. Curtis, I could tell you that it is, um, eighteen thousand and ninety-eight right now through to April.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you need to take it up just, I mean, you have highway user money sitting in the bank that you can actually use against this.
So. You gotta give me a number, Councilman Herring.
I said forty.
Oh, forty?
Yeah, I, I think we need to be sure we have, you know, I'd rather be covered than not be covered. If we have the budget.
What relates to repairs? To contract? So, for the community garden, isn't that coming out of, should that be coming out of the Public Works budget?
They've been, uh,
So the Public Works Department, um, take, take, um, control of the community garden. So we budget that amount for them.
But what does this represent though? What, I mean, what do they do for the community garden that's gonna cost eleven thousand two hundred dollars?
So that's utilizing master gardeners, supplies, uh, so we, we're just guesstimating that based upon, um, probably each year, whether uh, updating, repairing plots, uh, making sure we have public supplies, uh, utilizing master gardener for different events. Um, as far as helping the community, uh, things of that nature, but primarily, uh, contractors, supply calls to support the community.
All right.
Uh, President, can I follow up on?
Yeah, Councilman Herring.
Isn't it a community garden where citizens go and do their own gardening? What do we need a master gardener for?
Um, well, to, to also help with any instructional, um, events. Um, to be able to utilize any of their services. Potentially for, uh, just, just, just services. I think you're absolutely right that we could potentially scale that back, uh, as that committee is formed, uh, and, and we know where we are uh, with it, um, so I think it can go either way there. I just wanted to make sure we were, were covered in the event, uh, it was necessary.
Um, let me ask another question, the salary for the Public Works Director. So it's going up from eighty-four to eighty-six?
I wanna believe that that is the FY twenty-six chart number, which should reflect three percent, but I, I would have to confirm the, the numbers.
Well, if no one's in there, why are we giving three percent? Anybody coming as a new hire? Based on, uh, salary scale is?
Yes, sir.
Now that should be rolled back, I think.
Okay.
So, Mr. Herring, Mr. Herring, what we'll do is look at the transfers in for that, um, scale and level, and see if we could put a more, um, a more reasonable number there.
Yeah, because anybody, like I said, again, anybody you bring in will be a new hire, so there's a whole section for new hires um, based on the salary. All right, that's it for me. All right.
All right. General Operations. Let me just make sure I highlighted that we're rolling back, what? It was this. And we're rolling that back to what? Mr. Herring? Councilman Herring?
Mr. Simpson said, I mean, Mr. Stewart said he's gonna look at the salary scale and see what.
No, I'm talking about the, um, Community Garden one.
Oh, he, uh, he never gave a number, Mr. Simpson never gave a number, he said he can roll it back, but he never gave a number. So, I mean, I think you should roll it back some, but I mean, what does he think would be a good number?
Can I, can I, can I get involved here? Um, so the community garden is, we wanna make sure that the garden is well-kept and, um, you know, it doesn't turn into a, you know, neglect area. So we, I think there are, there are certain rules that should be, you know, maintained and, um, I think we need someone like Mr. Simpson was saying, someone like a master gardener, just to keep the people um, up to date with what they are doing. So I think that's what, yes.
Do you have an idea of what that will cost? Um, is there a contract?
He, yes, I, I can confirm that number, uh, I wanna get, I wanna get the exact number and I should be able to roll that back some. Uh, and I'll be able to provide that to Council.
Okay, all right, you could communicate it to Mr. Stewart and he can provide it in the revised budget that he'll send out. General Operations. Um, are there any questions on the general operations side?
Yes, um, electricity, you got here, you took it down to a hundred thousand dollars. And looking at April, year-to-date, you're at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for electricity. Why was, what's the rationale for taking it down when you're almost on target to hit a hundred and thirty, possibly? Uh, Mr.
Somebody? Anybody?
Sorry, I was on mute, I'm looking into it right now. Yes, you're right, we had it at a hundred thousand, so yes, I think we need to, um, go up. Because right now, I am seeing that we have spent a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen so far. So we may need to bring that back to the one thirty.
And another, uh, another question is the telephone. Um, you're taking it up to forty-five, three hundred? Seventy-six, thirty?
What was that?
Phone, communication.
So it went up one thirty, back to one thirty for electricity, right?
One thirty, yes, so.
And then for the telephone, what line are you talking about, Councilman Herring?
Seventy-six, thirty, I don't see it on.
Oh, right here. So we gone from twenty-two thousand to forty-five thousand?
And, um, I'm actually doing a review of, of the telephones, so I think that will go down as well.
Okay.
So I, I will, I will make those, um, adjustments. I, I think it's gonna be far less than that.
Okay, because I guess I'm, I'm looking at the actuals for April and it, we budgeted twenty-two thousand, but it's coming in at forty-five thousand dollars and yeah, we really need to look at that, why is it almost double?
You're talking about actual?
Actuals, yeah.
Yeah, the actual, I'm not, I'm not very happy with that number, I think there is some devices that need to be retired or, or taken out of, um, out of um, function. I don't think there are devices here that are used.
Yeah, are we, um, are we on, and with I-WEF expense, we're on target with that, because that fluctuates so much.
Oh, sorry, um, which account you're referring to?
I-WEF, uh, Workers' Comp, sixty-two fifty.
Okay. So we're at one fourteen right now.
We're at one fourteen?
Yes.
How's, is that, is that monthly or is that quarterly also?
Um, let me see. Um, so I don't think we're being billed every month, but the last, in April, we paid them twenty-two thousand dollars. Um. So I think, um, maybe by the end of this month, they'll charge us the other twenty-two thousand.
So.
So we'll get to the one thirty-six thousand.
So, and we're thinking it's gonna go down, twenty-twenty-six, Workers' Comp?
Oh, by the six to five hundred?
Say what?
You're talking about going to one thirty, as opposed to the one thirty-six that I had before?
No, I'm, I'm wondering why we're going to one thirty when we're looking at we're gonna end with one thirty-six, actually in the year, in this year. We had another twenty-two, that's like one thirty, that's about one thirty-six, so why? To one thirty, if you're at, um, you're gonna come in at one thirty-six and more than likely it's gonna go up again, depending on, you know, your staff and everything, staffing and everything.
Okay, um, I, let me look back at this, Mr. Herring, because I think I may have gotten this information from them. So let me look back into this and get back to you on that.
Okay, because I was gonna ask you that, did they send you, because you literally sent you, uh, you know, the numbers.
Yes, yes, so they normally send me, so let me look at what, what they sent to me. Yes.
And we said, and we, and we also, and the same for the, uh, insurances from Legit. You already, you got our numbers from them on, uh, for twenty-twenty-six?
Yes, I got numbers from them, yes.
All right, and that's it for me.
All right, Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President, the Grant Project Manager, are we still, is that for Mr. Himmler or is that for, uh, Mr. O'Connor?
That's for Mr. O'Connor.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one, I do have one other question, um, this bonus suspense, bonus based on merit, twenty-five thousand dollars? Uh, sixty-one thirty-five?
What is that?
It says bonus based on merit, bonus suspense?
So this in general is for those people who have, you know, done well, um, I'll leave it to the Council to decide whether or not there, um, there need to be any bonus suspended people who have done above and beyond their, um, their job functions.
Any other comments? You're none? Just a few more and we're done. With the first version. Uh, with my town center. Any questions? Here? You're none? Veterans Memorial? Okay. Bombers Market? Gold Room? All right, I don't think there's anything in an American Rescue Plan.
I do have something for the Gold Room, because that's, uh, um, there's a problem with the Gold Room, because again, we cannot do budgets in the Gold Room as a deficit budget. They say they're bringing in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there. Total expenses are gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand. Which, yeah. The, the charter for business having a deficit budget.
Um, Mr. Curtis, could you look at this, um, on the summary, because it will give you the revenues as well? The summary on the front, the first page. First tab. Scroll down.
It's a hundred and fifty-two.
So you say you're gonna bring in a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
Bought in a hundred and eighty-five and FY twenty-three?
They bought in a hundred and eighty-five, okay, you believe that one? That was awful.
These are.
Forty-three thousand dollars.
Ah, yeah, but that, that is true, I didn't, that's, I see that. Uh, but still in the one forty range.
Okay, so to date. Today to them, oh, no, to April, they have done a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand seven thirty?
Um, well, that's far off a hundred fifty-two. That's through April?
Through April.
And what's the average month?
Let me go back to the report.
Oh, it's my ten thousand dollars a month, right, to?
Yes.
May, June.
And that's one of those accounts that fluctuates depending on the events that are there. So you could see like in January and August, they had the highest earners, um, had eighteen thousand each. And then in March and February, they had approximately thirteen thousand each month. So um.
Especially vet fees, why were they at thirty-two thousand?
The, the special event is that we were projecting that we believe that the. Um, the goal room could have earned approximately eight thousand dollars from the, those special events, but. However, today, we had a come-to-moment uh, meeting with the coordinator with um, the city manager. And um, we believe that we should take that down.
To what, four thousand dollar level?
To four thousand dollars.
How much was, do we know how much was made on that um, blower event?
Uh, approximately seven hundred dollars.
Hmm.
Oh, approximately, how much?
Approximately seven hundred dollars.
And what event was that?
It, it was a flower event that she actually kept and um, that's what it netted.
Okay, how about the um, there was the event there, a training event there for. Well, that would have been a regular rental.
Yeah, that would have been rental, yes.
Alright. So even at this hundred twenty-four. We're over.
So if, I don't know if you could remember, but the, a couple years ago, when. We weren't fully staffed in the goal room, we had um, you know. Staff going in and assist with the rental and the um, setup and breakdown of the. The goal room, we had a little discussion on that as well, um, to see how we could subsidize that. Um, department with assistance, so um, maybe. Mr. Simpson could, you know, fill you in on what we were discussing today.
Yes, um, so we were discussing the option of reducing the staff and absorbing it. Through public works, we currently have a couple of positions uh, that are open. Um, the staff members that are currently working in the goal room. Uh, they have public works experience, as a matter of fact, they temp uh, when I came on initially. Um, and out of their temp work, uh, we realized that they would also be able to serve uh, good fits for the goal room. Uh, discussing today with the treasurer, the assistant city manager and the goal room coordinator today. Um, we wanted to look at moving the two crew members and then creating a work. Uh, shift situation where uh, we pretty much would have public works crews, uh, or say, public workers working. Um, seven days a week, um, with the two new hires. Also, their schedules adjusted to be able to provide the coverage uh, for the goal room. Um, for setup and breakdown and, and, and certain coverage there. Uh, the thought being that very similar to when I first started, uh, public works handled. Every aspect of the setup, breakdown, uh, until we did get some of the staffing on. Um, the maintenance of the, the facility, everything else, that's, that's just the thought process there to, to potentially. Absorb, uh, or should say, reduce that expense, uh, and bring in uh, workers that could work. Um, public works and also provide the coverage for the goal room and then budget that accordingly, and that, that's our thought.
Mr. President, on that issue?
Yes.
The goal room is enterprise, the enterprise zone, enterprise fund, it's a business. And so it needs to pay for itself, we should not be using. Uh, staff that's being paid through the city government to. Offset the expenses in the goal. Everything that they, everything, everything that they, um, they're supposed to prove that they can make money for themselves, if we're gonna be doing that, we might as well shut it down. There's no need to have it, if it's gonna be a, additional expense, so technically, it's a, it's an enterprise zone, it's a business, it's its own business, so. Everything it brings in is supposed to account for that um, in their budget. And if they make money, they make money, if they lose it, they lose it, it's just tell us what we have to do with, in the future, but. Mixing up those two, you shouldn't be doing it because we got it listed as an enterprise zone in our budget and in our finances. And, and uh, all of us gonna look at it too as an enterprise zone. It should be paying for itself, you can't be mixing that, the only reason we did it the last time cuz we were trying to get the. Uh, goal, I mean, get the goal room back on its feet and even still, this, the, the way that a, accounting should have been handled then was. Uh, it should have been transfers done from the goal room to the city. We used to do a, a regular transfer. From the goal room to the city to cover overhead because it is a business, we waived that already, we took on that one expense, which we really need to get back to. Doing that, so that you, you can actually see what the goal room is actually doing, but plus have our staff, have Glenn Arden staff. Uh, that's doing, running this, basically, being paid by the citizens, working in the goal room, which is a business. Or vice versa, that's not, yeah, that's not gonna work.
Okay, so Mr. Herring, just to be clear, um, the hours that they work into the goal will be charged to the goal room?
Then it should, you shouldn't be mixing us two though. You shouldn't be mixing the, the staff, public works with goal room and goal room with public works, I mean. Now, if you got them, and they're gonna come do some extra work on, on the side and they're getting paid through the goal room, that's on, that's one thing. But if you're gonna just say, okay, we're gonna absorb them under public works and we're gonna let them work in the goal room, no, it doesn't work like that. There need to be goal room staff, employed by the staff in the goal room, they need to show their salaries as such, in their budget and in their expenses.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
So keeping with that logic, then shouldn't the goal room charge us for, charge the council? And the administration, the government for using their services, for example, whether it be for Thanksgiving or whether it be for the Christmas party? Um, because what we're saying is. They're gonna lose revenue on those days cuz they could rent it out to somebody else, but they're hosting us, so. Keeping with that same logic, shouldn't we budget in our events? Um. Why not?
Because we own it. We own, the city of, the ca- the city council owns the goal room. That's who own, we own the goal room and we, it's just like, if you own an Airbnb, Airbnb, you're gonna charge your family to stay there?
Yeah, because. Yes. Um, but, but my, my, my question.
But you factor, so you factor all of that into your budget. Um, again, I, you know, we give away a lot of freebies in that go, in that room, we give it to the. Track club, we give it to the American Legion, we give it to Boys and Girls Club, they all get freebies, you know, so. If we giving away freebies, we giving away freebies. You know, but again, once again, we own the room, we, and what we do, when we do have events, we basically, um, I mean, they ain't like staff don't get paid. They still get paid, but my thing is, we also, I have an events for the citizens who actually pay for the room.
Yeah, so that, the, and, and that's my question though, so. We give away freebies, then the council comes in, uh, freebies to the ones you just stated, then the council comes in and. We get freebies, so how, how then is it fair? To knock them over the head because they aren't going to make money when they could bounce us and those freebies and book somebody that can pay?
But no, they, they can't bounce us or they can be bounced.
I, 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 I know, but what I'm saying.
Or, we used to make a lot of money in that goal room, we did, but it's, it's just gotta be advertised, it gotta be, you gotta be ticked up, that, that means that they gotta do their job. We used to be on profit on that, we always turn a profit with freebies, now I'm telling you, with gratis events, we turned a profit in that goal room. And we had more gratis events before than we do now, we limited it, this time, before that, we, I mean, you, a lot of people getting gratis. But we made money in the room. So you, I mean, they gotta do their job, they gotta kick up, kick it up a notch and get some people up in there, you know, my thing is, again, um. You know, you just gotta, you gotta sell a room, that's all you gotta, you gotta sell a room, I mean, and the room sold so well a long time ago, but the problem was, it went down for almost two and a half to three years. And people found somewhere else to go, so it's just matter of marketing the room and getting people back up in there. But again, but, but, but that still doesn't take away from the fact that, that they do need to make money, they gotta, they gotta. Be self-sufficient, cuz my thing is, if they're not being self-sufficient, then why are we even renting it out? If it's gonna be an additional burden on the city.
Yeah, and so, oh, I, I understand that. And so then, it's gonna cost to advertise, right, to rebound. From that pandemic where people found other places to go, other things to do, um. So that, that's the only point that I'm making, that it's gonna cost money to make money. Like you look.
Right.
You look in here, uh, sixty-seven, yeah, enterprise, yeah. Looking here, they have marketing, advertising. At twenty-five hundred dollars. But is that enough, we're already twenty-six thousand dollars over the budget? So. I guess that's the conundrum, right? We're supposed, it's supposed to make money, but how can it make money if it can't spend money to make money? And has to accommodate the freebies.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess this is what I'm looking at from a historical standpoint. We used to charge them on average twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty, yeah, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in overhead. And I know twenty-five thousand dollars was transferred over to, at the end of every year to the city of Lenarten. And we still had twenty thousand dollars that we made in profit. So when they started losing money, we waived that, and we haven't charged them that twenty, that overhead at all, they don't even pay overhead, so that's a give back to them. Okay, now the goal room actually owed the city of Lenarten two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From us waiving fees, not doing, allowing them to do this, allowing them to get away with that, covering payroll, stuff like that. So we said, okay, we'll do that to try to get them back into the. You know, um, black, but um. You know, I mean, at some point, you gotta look at the, the whole, look at, and at some point, I mean, you just gotta, I think they didn't give them break after break. Yeah, and they're still getting a break cuz we still don't charge them a, 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 overhead fee. You know, we still cover some of their, um, I'm sure we cover some of their um, salaries, you know, so. I mean, it's just, you gotta be mar- I'm not saying that, I'm not saying it can't be marketed, and they need to market it, you know, they need to market it and um, uh, uh. Spend money where it needs to be, but my thing is this, you can, how many infusions of money, how many, how much infusion of cash are you gonna give into this venture? Before you realize it's not working or it needs to move in a different direction, and having staff. And then, and that's absorbing more cost for the goal room, means that it isn't a, it isn't a viable operation. And we need to look at it as, as, as a whole. So, I mean, my thing is, if you're gonna give them a, an infusion of cash, say, okay, well, this is what we do for marketing purposes, we'll cover marketing for some things, but I mean. I just look at it, you know, at, at, that it needs to be looked at closely when it comes down to this goal room, and I think that. You know, it needs to actually tell you exactly what it's doing and how it's moving, um, when it comes down to the way it's run. And I'm not saying it's running bad, I'm just saying right now, you just gotta get the business back up. You know, and it, it's taking a bit to get it back up.
Okay, so. Alright, so the whole industry got hit. Yeah, and a lot of places closed down, um, event places closed down, I know a few have opened up over the past few years, but. A lot of closed down because of the pandemic, it just revenue wasn't flowing like that, um. So, my proposal. Is, you know, just looking at it overall, um, how do we stand up? And, and mind you that the same uh, operational standards aren't the same today, like, you know. Things have evolved, people are looking for different things in their event spaces, um, our event space is quite dated. Um, so. Then we need to look at. One, would it look to overhaul that in, entire space, I'm not saying doing it, I'm saying. Looking into what it would cost to overhaul the space for the right marketing, uh, setting the right prices. If the council was interested in doing that, and then launching that proposal to see if that. Makes money with, you know, a, you know, a payback program to the city, um, in place. Uh, whereas we can actually give it a fighting chance to survive, and if it survives, great. You know, it'll give us overhaul, it'll give us new pricing and stuff like that, and it'll be able to pay the, the city back, and if it doesn't. Then we'll have the answer that it doesn't, and we can shut it down.
I think that we need to look at, honestly, cuz I'm looking at, I'm looking at the financials right now and. As of April, they spent three hundred and ninety-one dollars on advertising, they had a budget of seventy-five hundred, seventy, seven thousand five hundred and fifty. So, they're not even utilizing the, the resources that they got. Seventy, you, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, what advertising did you do, what marketing have you done? You got seven thousand dollars left over at the end of the year, seven thousand one hundred and fifty, fifty-nine dollars left over at the end of the year. So we're talking about. Sure, and we haven't even utilized the, 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 what we have, as for. You know, the room is in itself, everybody that goes in that room says it looks really nice, and my thing is this, you don't wanna confuse that room with a big. Cash, a big thing of money, and you're not even getting a return that you, right now, I mean. I mean, you, like I said, you, marketing is there, the, the, the budget is there, it's not being utilized.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's a lot of resources out here that you can use, that, I mean, and my last, so we did all kinds of events and the, the event. Uh, the, the, the event manager there went to definitely local, local events, local, um, uh, events and, 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 um. You know, push the uh, push the venue, you know, especially for weddings and other things and stuff like that, but. You know, I'm like, you know, so I'm like, we, if we're not utilizing the resources that we got now, why would we even try to look at? Uh, an infusion of cash and a big ren- renovation job for. A room that's really just a me, a, 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 a space that you're renting, I mean, a lot of people would love to have a, an event there. I think now with the new fees that we put in place, we, we price ourselves out. I'm gonna tell you that right now, because our, our fee now, with the, we, we just voted on, is gonna be more than the Prince's County Ballroom. And I said that when we originally did it, so people are gonna look at it, and they're like, I'll pay another six hundred dollars and go to the PG County Ballroom versus. Paying almost more than that to sit here, to come to the um, the goal room. I'd say they keep on people see, I mean, we're not a, the goal room is not a banquet facility, but the goal room is a, is a, is a, is a hall, just a, really a hall that you're renting, it's just a space that you're renting. And it gives you the flexibility, that's why a lot of people like to go there because it gives you the flexibility, and now that, they probably realize that they had the flexibility now that, cuz you not. Required to have this licensed caterer and all this other stuff, and we opened that up for them, we, you need to see how that works, and that needs to get out there. Okay, you have your event here, you know, you don't have to have a licensed caterer, if you're having a private affair, you can actually bring your food in. So, I mean, it's just, how's, how's it gonna be marketed, again, seven thousand dollars sitting here, two hundred and ninety-one dollars spent for the year? Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Um. Any other questions or comments on this? Any other questions or comments on this? Mister Stewart, if you could get us an updated draft. Um, my question to council is, when can we meet again to see the um updated draft? Is Wednesday too soon? Anybody still awake?
Uh Mister Curtis, I think I'll have it ready by Wednesday end of day, so would Thursday be a better day?
Um, Thursday. I mean, it won't be a better day for me, but um, yeah, it's not up to me, if the council is ready, then. Pretty sure Vice President Ferguson can handle that meeting. Any council members still with me here?
I'm I'm fine on Thursday, if that's what we need to do, what are we shooting, when are we shooting and voting on this amended version? Cause I don't think.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, I don't think we need to wait till the sixteenth to do this. Because we only got an hour on the sixteenth, and I mean, as much as we can get done before then, I think we need to try to get this done as soon as possible.
Okay. Um, so, second version of the budget. Uh, do 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 do. We can have it by the. You say close of business on Wednesday. Um. Thursday, I can come to the meeting, I'll just be late to the meeting, uh so that won't, shouldn't hold us up too much. Uh. We would s- still have to.
Could we do Friday?
Oh.
Definitely. Definitely Friday. Um.
Sorry.
Actually, I don't know, my niece graduates earlier in the day, so I don't know. Friday is graduation day, so, um, for those members who have people graduating, I don't know, Friday's gonna be a good day. Um. But we still have the issue of. The constant yield, can we pass the budget before the constant, before we hear a custom yield? I think technically we can.
But if you don't do it right, and they gotta roll that back, you can't.
Yeah.
Right, so that's why tomorrow will be very, um, you know, strategic to get the the. The um, the advertisements out.
Um, I did have another question, I'm sorry. It was on here, I have it written down. It relates to. So I was operating off my hard copy. It's in the uh, oh, same one. The. Special police grid. Press phone. No sign. Let's leave the, Commerce Market. They just said yes, alright. So. We have these, this funding from the bond bill, right? Uh, I know we have a total of about four million dollars. What is the difference? Between the one point six million dollar capital outlay here? Highlight it so I can get it back. Next to zero. And the. Somewhere else, I saw it.
Was it in capital, go down?
Oh, yeah, sorry. And this.
Oh, that's, that's the cities, that's what's coming from um reserves for um the building.
The matching principle or something?
No, i- if you could remember, we had um, we had. Um dedicated a million dollar for the police building.
And we're gonna, for sure, spend that in twenty twenty six.
Police building is done, we can hold it for only three years. And then we could roll it over if the council agrees.
So with the four million dollars that we got, with the bond bill. Is there a stipulation, is there a stipulation in there that says that we have to spend a million dollars of our funds?
I have not seen where they have requested us to have a matching.
So then my question would be, we still have that outline that we have to go through. What if our. Building only costs four point two million dollars, or four point five million dollars? What if it costs less than four million dollars?
Then.
How do, how do we, how do we, how do we know we're actually gonna spend that million dollars? In twenty twenty six?
We have been providing for it for the last two years since it was um dedicated. So unless the work is done, we um will not spend it.
I saw one of them, there was a. There was a, what is the surplus here?
The surplus is referring to any funds that are remaining after um. After. Operating surpluses, so we distribute it to either savings and um capital project going forward.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this just for the capital? Projects budget or just for all the budgets?
It's all budget, it's all budget.
So. Alright, so if we have a surplus of two nineteen, then why are we still pulling something from the surplus?
No, um, so, uh, your numbers, so a lot of your numbers have changed because you, if you realize.
Alright, okay, that's fair, that's fair. Get us a new copy.
Eighty, the two eighty six that you see there, that's uh funds coming from the uh user, highway user tax. And that's normally put in reserve for future years.
Okay, you just get us, uh, if you could, a a new copy, and please remember to take out that double entry for the police.
Salaries.
Salaries. Uh, and you can use it at the new rate of thirty nine forty seven, um, we can go from there.
Will do.
Alright, so Thursday, can we say seven thirty? Any opposition to seven thirty, starting at seven thirty?
Uh, we can't start earlier than seven thirty, that's a regular meeting.
Well. Try not to put Vice President Ferguson in too much of a jam. Because I can make it by eight.
Can we start eight?
And I was, I doubt people want to start at eight. Lost the crowd. Seven thirty, go once. I'm sorry, Michelle.
It won't be that long.
Yeah. So you said you're fine with seven thirty?
Yes.
Don't we have to go on a closed session on one at that next meeting too?
That's on Monday, right? You're talking about for the.
That would be Tuesday at the public hearing.
Is that what you're talking about, Councilman Harry?
Uh, Mister Simpson said he needed to go on a closed session to discuss reorg. Of staff. Remember taking out uh executive assistant and reorganize that.
Well, maybe you guys can start with that on Thursday, and then I'll make it in time for the meeting. I'm pretty sure that'll be an interesting conversation, that should take about thirty minutes.
Hmm, maybe.
That's a thought. I mean, anybody got any objections to it, we can do that.
You can start off with the executive meeting and then have your regular meeting, yep, have a regular meeting at eight. Any opposition? Okay. So, we'll have an executive session at seven thirty, and then have a um. Should we have just called a special regular meeting, or should it be another work session?
Work session.
Alright, another work session that starts at eight. Time to uh go through it. Wednesday night, and be ready by Thursday. And uh Mister Stewart and Mister Simpson, you guys, and Mister Wood, you guys get back to us. Tomorrow morning with whatever paper or publication that we can put this in, um. And then we can. Um. Proceed accordingly, and the meeting Thursday will be remote, it won't be a person.
I understand. Yeah, good.
Everybody's so much energy at midnight. Alright, uh, I think that's it, any other, any other items? Here none, time is twelve oh seven. You guys have a good night.
You too, good night.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And rising.
Alright, bye.